Welcome to the Harrison Township Planning Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, July 21st, 2022, and we will call the meeting to order at about 7:04. May I have roll call, please?
Member Dublin, here. Member Bacha.
Here.
Member Bloom, absent. Member Mulder.
Here.
Member Tomonello.
Here.
Member Parker, here. Chair Murray.
Present, thank you. May I have approval of the agenda as presented, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, just from over. I'll support Ms. Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, thank you. May I have approval of our minutes from the June 16th, 2022 meeting? Or make notes any corrections that are required?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 30th, 2022 meeting.
June 16th.
Oh, right. From the special meeting, oh.
Oh, yeah, no, we're doing regular.
Okay, I don't have those in front of me.
I do not, as well.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 16th regular planning commission meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the last June 16th meeting. Second, please?
Support.
Mr. Tomonello, thank you so much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our first hearing and review this evening.
Case 19-22-C, our boat town Marina rentals 30301 South River Road.
This is a compliance review of temporary seasonal approved approval for a floating office for boat rentals and a portage on the property. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Hi. Go ahead and come up. And so we are minus our microphones tonight, so if you hear us yelling, it's because we are, so please forgive us, and I'm going to ask you to just be loud and clear.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're requesting?
Well, I was just requesting over there water for our boats there.
So you're asking for, you're asking for township services, utilities?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and anything else?
No.
Madam Chair, I can't, I believe this is a compliance review, it has nothing to do with services at the site. This is a compliance review to the special land use.
And it's listed as a compliance review of the temporary seasonal approval?
This has nothing to do with any kind of, any kind of services rendered or services available.
So can we defer to the building department or to the planner for any additional information to set us straight?
Yes, so we've got a memo in the packet for you from me covering this item, and it just explains why it's in front of you. So, this is boat town Marina and rentals. You may recall that you originally, the planning commission originally approved in July of 2022 a special land use request to establish the seasonal floating office for boat rentals on this property. Your special land use approval is valid for as much as five years, and that's what you did at that time, but you also have the ability to request an annual compliance review to have them come before the planning commission. They last did their annual compliance review was in October of last year, and at that planning commission meeting, you reviewed the use, you provided some comments. Basically, your motion was to schedule another compliance review before the end of July 2022, so that's why they're here this evening. And you said you would require that the temporary use adhere to the following conditions. This is directly from the minutes from your October 2021 planning commission meeting. You wanted to see them provide 21 total parking spaces specifically designed and signed for the seven boat rentals. Wanted to see a continuous of no off-street parking. No boats, trailers, RVs, or similar equipment can be stored during the wet season, May through October. Porta potty must have screening at least the height of the body. No signage on the property at any time. No tents are allowed on the property unless the proper permits are obtained. No storage on the property during the wet season. So those were the items that you discussed and included in your motion at that time. It is again in front of you for the annual compliance review. In the ordinance, it explains what the purpose of a compliance review is. It says that the planning commission may require compliance reviews on an annual basis or such other times after due notice for good cause shown. As part of a compliance review, the planning commission may revoke the special land use approval based on evidence that the structure or use is not properly maintained, has caused safety issues, or has become a nuisance either on or off the site with regard to circulation, light, noise, and other nuisance members, nuisance issues. So you have the ability to revoke the special land use, or you could say, we'll see you again within a year, or you could decide, you know, technically you approved them for a full five years, so you could decide not to schedule another compliance review if you wanted to do that. So you have options in the ordinance, but this is an opportunity to reach out to the applicant, hear from them, to talk to the building department to see if there have been any issues that they've heard about, and generally just discuss compliance issues at the site.
Thank you. Thank you for that summary, because I do not have a copy of your letter, so.
Okay.
I do have, however, have the hand.
That was the originally approved July 2020.
With some of our information on the bottom, right. No off-street parking, no boats and trailers to be stored during the wet season, approval for five years subject to annual compliance inspection review. Okay, so the first thing I'm going to ask is, our building official, are you aware of any compliance issues against the property? Have there been any tickets, any notifications, any complaints or issues?
We haven't had tickets, the only thing that we have, Larry has everything. Larry has everything that's of concern right now.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to go over and do a summary of the site.
That would be great.
So just to remind everyone, this is our third compliance review for this Marina. We, our first compliance review, there were several violations relative to the requirements. The second site review was done in the fall. There were additional violations on the site. Now, this is our third review, and I did send out some documentation. And actually, I was going to ask Adam, the planner, to bring up some photos of some additional violations that we encountered again at the site. I'd be happy to share those with everyone if everyone's okay with that. I guess I'll let Mr. Young drive, and we could sort of talk about them. So this trailer here, it's been on site for at least 40 days. You can also see the junk dock behind it, so that's a violation. Signs, the part of the requirement said there's no signs, there's been signs on the property since April. There's actually two of these signs. This is not a violation, but there's two pedestrian hazards on the site, actually, there's three. The one around the telephone pole, that's about a four-foot-high stack of crushed concrete. Where the piling is, that's a drain that is either non-functioning or has an issue.
Actually, that there.
Chair, can you please wait?
Sure.
Yeah.
So those are Macomb County Road Commission, but they've been like that since last year. They've been over there over a year. Here's the other pile. Again, garbage and debris on the site. Just another picture of the. This, this actually, I believe, the applicant did receive a warning on this, this is another sign. This was done, I believe, over the winter 2002. Of course, after he was notified, the sign was removed. And this is the new addition, now we're selling, we have a yacht sales, sales boat, so we're doing sales out of that site as well, which is not allowed.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, and, but there haven't been any violations marked officially?
So the building official doesn't initially grant violations, they provide warnings.
Okay.
So I believe on the boat, the sign for the boat shrink wrap, I believe there was a warning on that, or at least spoke to them.
Which was removed right away.
Hold on, hold on.
And Mr. Condon can surely talk about this, but, you know, the whole thing is, he wants compliance, so typically if there's an issue, he'll call rather than issue a warning or violation. So, and you can verify that, but I don't want to speak into the app.
Typically, when we get these complaints, there's a violation, we'll go over and talk to them. And most of the time, it is corrected, then it'll come back, so it's been back and forth for a while.
And that occurred?
Yep.
Okay. Compliance, but at that time?
At that time.
Okay.
For that one item, and then the other ones, again, these are repeat, a three-peat of same violations that we've had since the initial compliance review.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna, actually, if we could go to, Adam, can you bring those pictures up again, please?
Yep.
Thank you. I want to address each one and then give the applicant an opportunity. Thank you. Okay, so.
I failed to show this one, thank you.
Thank you. So boat trailer storage?
That's not for storage, actually, the trailer's been there for not even two weeks. Not even two weeks, because I can tell you right now, I had a boat break down, and I had to use that trailer to utilize the boat, so, I mean, to actually lift it up and bring it to a service. That's the reason that trailer's even there, so, and it's just, it was just there temporarily. So, I mean, it's a piece of our equipment that we use every day.
Madam Chair, I can tell you that it was there from the end of June until today.
Okay, okay, so definitely a couple of weeks, and.
More than a couple of weeks, it's close to a month.
Yeah, that's.
Actually, it's over 30 days.
Yeah. So, and what is our requirement for temporary storage? I mean, temporary, isn't it like 48 hours?
You had said, one of your conditions of approval, and restated in October, was no boats, trailers, RVs, or similar equipment can be stored during the wet season, May through October.
Well, this is the wet season. So you understand?
Yes, ma'am.
You understand that?
Yes.
Okay, so is that trailer there today?
Yes, it is.
And is that trailer being used today to extract the boat?
Yes, it was used today, it was used, and I'll get it out before the weekend.
And are you using it on a daily basis?
On a daily basis.
You're using that trailer on a daily basis?
Yes.
So you're performing in-and-out storage?
Well, actually, no, it's actually, when our boats are, they're being used, we actually check the props, and that, we pull the boat out of the water at the, at the south end of South River Road.
I don't remember that as being part of the initial discussion for the temporary approval.
It's a piece of the work equipment that we use.
I understand.
Every, every, at least twice a week here, so.
Okay, and the items that are placed behind the trailer?
That's something that we have to remove, you know.
And when will that be removed?
I'll get it out of there this weekend.
So if someone were to come to the property Monday?
Yes, it'll be gone.
It would be gone?
Yes.
Next picture, please? And.
I can't read that, I'm not, I see that it's a sign.
There's two signs.
Oh, it's a boat rental sign, thank you.
Actually, what it is, it's not, it's actually, it's a sale, it's a dock rental sign. We rent the docks there, and that's just a sign for the dock rentals. And that, I think, we're pretty much full, so I think I can take those down.
And the four-foot pile of conch, chipped concrete up against the telephone pole?
Well, that's a new one to me, because it's been there for a couple of years now. I didn't know that that was something we had to remove, I'll remove it.
Madam Chair, that's not a compliance item, it's a safety item that I want to point out to the commissioners, including the drain.
Okay, all right, and so, and I can't see the drain, I can't see the drain in that picture. Oh, the drain is where the flag is, yeah, okay. So that, yeah, that doesn't look good at all. And so would that be a Macomb County Road Commission repair? Or is that a township repair?
That is a pump.
Or is that an applicant?
It's a, it's a pump that pulls the water from on the road and puts it back in the canal. And I talked to Kenny Fercas about that, because the water was actually flooding the road there. So this, this last year, we took the pump out of it, so we can remove this.
Well, I'm not sure if that's a compliance, in compliance, directly vacating water from the road into.
Well, it was, there was so much water that would pile up on the road there in front of the sheriff's office there, that we would, we actually pulled it out and put it back into the canal. And that's the only reason that that pump is there, because it was, when it would flood, the whole area would flood, the whole, like, I would say, around 30, 40 feet would be underwater.
And so is, so that pump is there permanently?
No, no, I can take it out, I can take the pump out. Because it's, I don't think, though, we haven't had that much rain there this year so far.
So it's essentially just a matter of convenience that it's there for when it does rain?
Right. And that, I had talked to the, actually, Road Commission, and they said that there's nothing they can do about, because the water was backing up on, right in that section right there, because we did grade it, but I don't know what, the Road County Commissioners couldn't, they couldn't figure out what to do with it. So I talked to Kenny Fercas, and he told me, just why don't you put a pump in there? And that's what I did, I put a pump in there. And it helped out, you know, it had the road pretty, pretty dry. Because when it does rain pretty hard there, the puddles on the road, they pile up, you know, in front of the sheriff's station there.
I don't know how to address this, other than to say.
I don't think it's ours to address, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. This is something the building department, I believe, would have to take care of.
If it's a safety issue, and then that's a, that's a compliance issue for the.
Rope commission issue, though, because that's the rope commissions right away, and rope commissions.
Well, it certainly looks like it's, it does, it looks like it's in their purview, so.
And they put pumps all up and down Jefferson, I mean, we have pumps everywhere, so.
And do they, and do you, are you aware that they remove them as needed? Or do they live there all the seasons?
Well, during the wet season last year, they kind of lived there, but they were in one lane of the road, Jefferson.
But they do put a pump at Detroit Street and South River Road, because that pump, there's that whole huge section over there that backs up pretty strong.
There's pumps all over the township that are put in and removed, and I don't know who does it, but it's simply sure it's too.
During the high waters?
I think it's just during the high water.
During the high water, the water was higher than the, like, the road surface, it was grained, and they had to put bags in and block the pumps off, or block the drains off, and the pumps are there to then review the water. Well, since the water's come down, I believe all the bags have been removed.
So, and this is what we have left, so, so, so not a compliance issue as far as we're concerned, or perhaps even as far as the township is concerned. Macomb County Road Commission, yes. So do we then request that they do a better job at making this a safety, not a safety issue, or?
Because I don't think we have that authority, unfortunately.
This was just for information only, because this is a parking area, pedestrians walk here, cars are coming in and out, so I just wanted to bring it to the commissioner's attention.
Sure, parking at night could be an issue.
But we have no, we have no jurisdiction over this issue.
So that's an info line. Okay, thank you. So shrink wrap sales, signage.
That was up there, and it was removed right away, because that's the actual shrink wrap guy, the shrink wraps all the boats, he put that on in the boat, and we had to remove it, because whoever the person there that inspects all that, we took it down right away.
So that is not there today?
No.
Next, please, thank you. So boat sales?
That's someone who rents the space from us.
And, but still, you're responsible for.
Right, I understand, you won't see that. I didn't know that that was, I didn't know that was compliant with anything here, so.
So, so you realize that you need to make it known to your customers that what is allowed and what is not allowed, and that you are ultimately responsible?
Right, I, I know the boat was there, but I never saw that sign there, so I'll have them remove that.
Absolutely, okay. Next, please? Is that the last one?
I think that's it.
Okay, okay. Oh, the junk.
That's all been removed beginning of the season here.
That was their.
That was, that was kind of like all the people that, you know, that store their boats there, and that's what.
So.
That's been removed since early May.
And I beg to differ with you, I pass by there every day, and it's there this morning.
Well, you want to go by there now, I can show it to you, there's none of that.
Okay.
It's very clean, it's very.
Since this morning?
Very manicure, very nice.
If Mr. Tomonello saw that there this morning, and you're saying it's not there now?
I don't know, is it there right now? Did you see that this morning?
The picture was taken, when did I send the pictures to you, Adam?
Yesterday.
Okay, so it was there yesterday.
I don't even know it's even there, I didn't know it was there. So I will have that removed right away, I didn't know it was even there.
So again, you, as the owner and the one, the applicant, it's your responsibility?
I understand it, I'm surprised that that's even there, I could, I'm really, I didn't know that. Somebody just did this and dumped it there.
It's been there since last year, sir.
Last year?
And it does look like part of the dock. Okay, so you're going to be removing some junk this weekend?
Yep.
Can we say that this is going to be gone this weekend as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Tomonello, anything else?
No.
All right, so, so we are not talking about additional parking, we are not talking about adding water, we are talking about compliance based on the items that we had issue with last October and the previous compliance review, and, and, and this compliance review is to address current issues and past issues, but not utilities?
I understand.
Okay. All right. Mr. Tomonello, anything that you want to?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
The reason why he brought up the water services is, his business partner is trying to get a water meter installed there, so that they can have a water spigot to wash down the boats, and it was recommended to them to bring it to your attention today, and has to include that in approval.
Well, they need to, don't they need to follow through and have a review with you, and perhaps the planner first before it comes to us? Something formal, other than just, I'd like water?
It's up to you guys. They were instructed by our water sewer, Water and Sewer Services Director to bring it to your attention today.
Okay.
They were supposed to review a site plan, I don't know if he brought that or not, but that's why he's bringing it to your attention.
Well, if that's, and then again, if a site plan is going to be submitted, it's got to be submitted to the township within the timeframe in order to meet the requirement for tonight's meeting, we can't just, you know, but, but thank you for sharing that information, so, so we've heard it.
Would the site plan show where the meter would, would be located? Yeah, it's really not a planning commission jurisdiction, where, you know, the connection of the water meter is up to the public works department to approve that or not approve that. I know that there was a question, or at least the fact that it was coming before you this month, maybe was a measure just for the DPW to know for sure that you're going to continue to allow this, this use, and maybe is looking for your direction, I guess, in that sense, as to whether he could approve that request. Maybe part of his deliberation, I suppose.
So I think the thing is, because this is a special land use, basically, once everything is outlined and once there is a plan, you know, where the meter goes, or there are going to be runs from the meter, how's it going to be winterized, you know, a meter has to be removed every year, because it's not inside, so. So all that stuff has to come before us, but the thing is, being a special land use, we have to approve and change the special land use. So I get it, and they're saying this is what we're thinking about, which is good, and I appreciate that, but, you know, for us to make a decision now to include or not include it as part of the special land use permissions, I don't think would be proper.
No, I, I agree, I mean, I have nothing, so.
Yeah. So private property owner can't just apply for a meter and get a water meter on their property?
You must have a building. The ordinance says you must have a building.
Well, that explains it, thank you. Which brings us back to the floating office situation. The floating office, brings back to the floating office as part of this land use.
Pseudo-building, yeah, okay, all right. Okay, anything else that you would like to share before we have our discussion?
No.
Okay. Commissioners? Compliance review. Some violations, some issues, they've been addressed, have they been addressed to your satisfaction? And if so, what do you want to do?
So basically, we're looking at removing the block, removing the sign that a third party placed, and removing the dock materials.
And the junk, the, you know, the, making sure that the signs are gone, nobody's selling anything on the property. The trailer, I don't know how you all want to address the trailer. I get that it's a piece of workable equipment, commonly needed and used in that business. But where do we draw the line with equipment usage and storage? So, so if it's something that's used on a daily basis, then that becomes use and not storage?
And if I can.
Please?
That trailer has not moved in the last 30 days, so it's been there, same position, same distance away from that piece of dock that's sitting back there. You know, special land use is very clear, no storage during the wet season, it's very clear.
Right.
And the only thing I want to bring up, this is our third review, planning commission is not supposed to be a babysitter.
Right.
So we need to make a decision. We want to come in, do a review every year, quite frankly, I would hope we're in our third year, our third review, there'd be squeaky clean, and we say, you know what, we don't have to review anymore.
Yeah.
But because of the issues we're having, reoccurring and reoccurring, and that's what's really, I guess, you know, I guess really having my thoughts going, is because, you know what, it's just, we can't, we can't. you know, I guess really having my thoughts going, is because, you know what, it's just, we, we can't, we can't trust it, because these violations are reoccurring.
And, and we don't want to, and, and, and just to, to expand on that, we don't want it to appear as though we're allowing this. If one gets away with it, then someone else can get away with it, and someone else can get away with it. And before you know it, you've got, you've established a routine, you've established a, a common acceptance. And, and, and I agree with you, I, I, "That's a slippery slope," right, as we used to say, so.
I had a question for Adam. The frequency of the reviews, is it strictly once a year? Or is the frequency really up to the Planning Commission?
The language suggests annual basis, but it does say, "Or such other times after due notice for good cause shown." So in my mind, that's their annual reviews, but in between the time, if you believe that there's a reason to have them here before you, you could provide notice and ask them to do that. But it's an annual review normally.
So I'm definitely not leaning towards just approving it for the, you know, the rest of the five-year special land use. It is repeat things, now it is an improvement over where it stood last year. And the owners, you know, said that there's some other issues he's looking at as far as the getting water service. And at that time, if he was looking to amend the special land use, something like the trailer that's used for boat maintenance could be brought into amending the special land use at the same time.
And there could be a designated spot for that to be part, if it's something that he uses every, you know, other day or whatever.
And that's why I was looking at possibly looking towards requesting another review later in the season. There's items in here he said will be cleaned up this weekend. We'll get, you know, the rest of the wet season reviewed, if there's any additional signs, and give them also a chance to possibly come in and try to amend the special land use. So, like I said, my personal feeling is I'm not leaning towards just the approval from here on out, but leaning towards another review.
So is tabling to next meeting, the next regular meeting, an option for him to figure out the water issue and then address these other items?
I, I wouldn't think so. I, I think, I think the water thing is a whole separate issue, it's a whole separate application. So I think tonight we either need to make a motion to schedule another review or revoke the special land use. I think that's our two options.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. So are we, are we, so, so let's, let's address the issues that we've, that, that have been provided to us. And taking into consideration the applicant's conversation regarding each one of the items, do we want to accept and perhaps do a time limit for an additional review, maybe at the end of the, at the end of the wet season? Or do we want to revoke? Or request or require any amendments?
And I guess that's why I'm proposing tabling in lieu of setting a future time, because then if the applicant is of a mind to comply, that means he might comply more quickly than if it's three or four and the end of the season.
So are you thinking like thirty days, or you, you just like the next meeting?
The next meeting.
Okay.
That's, that would be my suggestion. Otherwise, if we, if we ask him to come back at the end of the season, then potentially these issues could linger through the season.
And we don't want that, we definitely don't.
So this gives him an opportunity to go and check out these things that he says he hasn't seen, so that he's able to observe them directly for himself. And then make the decision, does he want, is he able to do his business in compliance or not?
Right, I like that idea. That's a kind of a win-win.
Potentially.
Yeah. Yeah, potentially. Okay.
And that would just would be, what my suggestion would be, rather than revoking. I mean, I hate to, I'd like to give him an opportunity again, but realize it's again, but it's a viable business.
Is this an item that can be tabled, or would we basically just be looking to schedule another tabling as an example?
You could table the compliance review.
I mean, the standard just specifically says, "As part of a compliance review, the Planning Commission may revoke the special land use approval based on evidence that the structure or use is not properly maintained, has caused safety issues, or has become a nuisance, either on or off the site with regard to circulation, light noise, and other nuisance issues."
And those are...
And, and the other issues would be not compliant with your requirements. So, but it doesn't, you know, it's an item that's up today, so if you'd like to table it, you can. Or you could choose to not revoke it and set another compliance review at the end of wet season. You could do that, or you could revoke.
See, yeah, and I guess if I had my brothers, I'd rather just set another compliance review at this time next year. That way we have time to see if the items are resolved, and then we have time to see if they're repeated, if they're being repeated. Because that, that comes down to compliance. You know, fixing them today, really, it fixes them today, but it doesn't, it doesn't really testify what the long-term solution is, right? Because if it's going to violate again next year, it doesn't make any sense.
Right, right.
So that would be my suggestion, is to set another compliance review this time next year.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
So, okay, so...
And I'll make that motion if, if...
Okay, let me, let me just add to that for a second here, please. So if we wait another year, if we, if we, is there a way, a better way to incorporate both parts? Table it conditional for, for, to, to be reviewed at the next Planning Commission meeting, so that we have essentially forced compliance?
Sure.
And, and then not to be put back, you know, after approval?
Oh, no, I mean, those items are...
But that gives us the opportunity to then to say, if the, if the applicant shows compliance and, and, you know, wants to do the right thing, then we can ask for another compliance review in a year. And that gives us an opportunity to, to pay attention to the property through the rest of the wet season and into the beginning of next year.
Madam Chair, I was going, I'd suggested, that's where my head was trending to.
Yeah.
To, to give us a more immediate evaluation, so table till, till the August meeting, so we can do an immediate review on, on how reactive the petitioner is. And then again, we still have the right in August to say we're going to mandate another compliance review anyways, right? So I think, we can capture both concepts and probably even protect the interests of the township and residents.
And, and the applicant as well. I mean, that gives him an opportunity to address the issues with your customers, making sure that they understand the importance of compliance and, and, and that it ultimately falls on your shoulders.
Yes.
So, and then you have the right to handle that, however, you know, if you have a non-compliant customer.
Madam Chair, I don't think you have to call it tabling, you can just say, "Okay, we're going to do an annual review next year at this time, and we're giving you notice that you're having another compliance review at the end of wet season."
Okay, well, it, it, and so if we want essentially a compliance review in four weeks?
Right.
Okay, all right. Because, when does the wet season end?
Labor Day.
Labor Day, okay.
Oh, yeah, we don't have it. Well, I feel like you'd want to do it before that, because at the end of wet season, then we, he can store the boats there. So then we're in a whole...
Right, so I like the idea of the next Planning Commission meeting.
Another thing, I think the next Planning Commission meeting, and then again next year, I think we're going to need that, that year. And then maybe next year, we'll be at a point where we can say, "Okay, here you go, two years."
Yes.
And this property is very unique, and there's, you know, he's done a lot to improve the site with our guidance.
Okay, in that case, a motion or further discussion, please? Mr. Tomonello, you mentioned that you were prepared to make a motion, would you...
Yeah, sure, so I'll, I'll make a motion to, to table item, and I apologize, my computer's not up.
Here it is.
Nineteen dash twenty-two dash CR?
To table nineteen twenty-two CR to the next Planning Commission meeting. Your date is August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. And to make a decision on, on, or just to table, I think that's all we need right now.
Okay, all right, and, and, and may I add that, that to comply with the items that we have previously stated? Removal of the junk, removal of the signs?
Removal of the boat.
Yeah, removal of everything we spoke about tonight was in violation of the special land use.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll support.
Uh, thank you. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Chair.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Do you want the pontoon boat trailer removed at this time?
There's no, there's no, there's no storage during the wet season.
I know, we talked about dedicating a spot for it, and some of the members said it.
That's not, that's not what's in this...
So, you want it all removed, I'm going to itemize something, something a lot.
Okay, got it.
So if you want that on there, let me know.
I would say yes.
I would say for the time being, yes, and then maybe, if we're coming back for amendments to the special land use, then maybe there's a discussion of a designated spot, screening, or however you go with that.
That makes sense for the entire site.
Yes.
So are we, so are we amenable to that? Okay. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Baca?
Yes.
Member Dava?
Yes.
Uh, Member Mulder?
Yes.
Member Tomonello?
Yes.
Member Rupaka?
Yes.
Chair Murray?
Yes. So we will see you in, we will see you on the eighteenth of August?
Okay.
And we'll look for compliance.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item tonight, Mrs. Rupaka.
Case number fourteen dash twenty-two PUD McMackin Boating Center LLC, three zero two zero zero North River Row.
Thank you. This is a formal planned unit development review of seven residential condominiums. We have been supplied a large, a large group of paper, a large group of plans, a development impact statement, a master deed, the bylaws, a development agreement, and the initial floor plans and the site plans in, for the property. Adam, would you please go ahead and, and in your wonderful wisdom, explain PUD and the...
Yes.
Thank you.
Before that, Madam Chair, did I ask that you put the letters up, because we did not receive letters?
Okay.
And I just got it today.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, yeah, I do have a few hours.
All right, let me do that.
I'm trying to read it on my phone.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
Everybody gets some text.
Yeah, I know, I can't, I can't read those on, on a tiny screen.
Good. Okay, this is a final or formal planned unit development submittal. The ordinance requires a public hearing to be held, so this is also a public hearing on this item. For planned unit developments, there's a two-step process. The first step occurred, I think it was in January, conceptual review, where they shared a concept development plan of the site. No form, no, no decisions were made, it was just a discussion only. The second step is where they need to come back with more detail, architectural plans, site plans. This is also a proposed condominium development, so they also have condominium with master deed and bylaws. They also provide their planned unit development agreement draft. So the, the property is on North River Road, McMackin Boating Center. It's a one point two five acre property right now. They're actually proposing, they own the property, they're proposing to split it up so that the one side will be developed for these seven condominium, attached condominiums. And the remainder of the site will remain the marina. The property is owned waterfront district right now. The planned unit development is allowed as a special land use within the zoning ordinance. So again, the review procedure is, now that it is a formal review, the Planning Commission holds a public hearing. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation. So it could be this evening, or it could be at a subsequent meeting. Ultimately, the Township Board has final approval, final authority for approval of a planned unit development, as well as the development agreement that would need to be reviewed by the Township Attorney. So if you choose to, to make a recommendation this evening, or, or in the future, it is just that, just a recommendation. The, because it's a condominium, as I said, they've, they've provided the, the master deed, the condominium documents and draft form for your review as well. So we have taken a look at the, the project. We do have some comments here, so this, in January, we talked about, and they specifically asked that the Planning Commission waive the requirement for the development impact statement and traffic study. So you are able to do that as a Planning Mission, you are able to waive that requirement. The, the ordinance does say, though, that a traffic study may be waived only in instances where it is determined that the development will not generate a significant amount of traffic above and beyond the traffic conditions of budding the site. So they haven't supplied a traffic impact study, they haven't supplied a development impact study to you. So that may be something you'd want to discuss at that. This, the ordinance requires for a planned unit development in a non-residential zone that the property be a minimum of five acres in size. They're requesting, this is less than five acres in size. So in doing so, the Planning Commission needs to determine whether, is this planned unit development generally consistent with what would be expected under the current zoning district, waterfront zoning district? Is it consistent with the master plan? Or is it located at the intersection of two roads? Or in such a manner that it would provide a transition between land uses? We did provide some comments related to these items for you. Hope you've had an opportunity to take a look at that. Based on the, you know, the waterfront zoning district, which does allow residential development, they also, you know, could choose to try and rezone to like a, you know, low-density, multiple-family district. Based on current zoning options, they could do between five and seven dwelling units per acre. They're proposing seven point three dwelling units per acre, based on that three-quarters of an acre site. Additional comments, boat wells and marina parking. So this is probably the most significant comment and maybe concern that I have that needs to be addressed. The, the, currently, there are twenty-seven boat docks, which, if you double it, that's about fifty-four boat wells on that one and, one and a quarter acre parcel. The development, in the, in the development agreement, they do indicate that fourteen boat wells will be assigned to the units in the condominium, so two per condominium unit. But that leaves forty boat wells, and many of them, I, I forget how many are directly in front of the proposed condominiums, but it's more than fourteen.
I saw that.
So the question is, right now, the marina is largely is just kind of a gravel, open area, that's kind of open parking. Now the question is, can they support taking away about a half an acre from the current property size, keeping forty boat wells, which each, each one well requires one parking space? If they're, you know, owned, or if they're rented, they require three parking spaces for each well. So we don't have information about that, we don't have information about how many parking spaces are, are available right now at the, at the marina. at the, at the marina. How many would be available if you take away a half an acre for this site, or three quarters of an acre to accommodate the condominium use? And what's left over? I, I do know, I did receive, uh, an email from the applicant, I believe they have some updated drawings and are prepared to address that. That concern with you this evening.
And then you address signage?
Yeah, just, um, not sure, not clear whether they're proposing to have like a, a condominium development sign, um, along, along the frontage. Uh, if not, that's fine, just indicate that on the plan, that they're not proposing the sign. Um, with regard to just the site plan, I'm getting away from planning and development requirements, but just site plan requirements. Probably the most significant one is the separation between the marina and the condos. So, our ordinance requires where a marina use would be located next to a residential use, that you'd have a major screen. That's a, that's a wall along with a ten-foot wide greenbelt, or it could be other, it could be a fence with maybe fifteen-foot wide greenbelt, or maybe, I think just a twenty-four-foot wide greenbelt with no fence or wall. Right now, what they're proposing to do is just kind of the property, the property line that they would create, that splits the two, kind of the gravel from the marina butts up directly to the property line. And then, immediately on the other side is that, the little park area that they're proposing for the condominium. So, I see safety issues, I see, nobody wants to look at that. And, given that they're creating the situation, because they own the marina now, they're developing the condos, I think it's, I think on the marina side of the property, um, they should be required to put in that major screen for the ordinance. And I think a fence or a wall would be appropriate, a separation for the users of the condominium and that little park area. Just wanna make sure that, um, I believe Fire Marshal has provided comments to you, just to make sure that...
We do have that, I do have that, that letter was provided.
And, and given that these units will be accessed directly from North River Road, driveways will, they'll be backing in and out of there, um, is that a question, you know, that, how will, will the fire department be able to serve these condominium developments appropriately? Uh, in the, in the open space and parked area, um, I, I don't know if they've really well, you know, thought out exactly how that should go and what kind of amenities. They kind of just show five picnic tables of, with chairs, uh, at the location. Kind of seemed to me like five picnic tables for seven units doesn't really make sense. Maybe there's a better opportunity to do one or two picnic tables and maybe something else in the, in the area. Benches, walkways, gardens, whatever it might be. It, I think it is important to, to talk about that, to see if they maybe have some ideas for that, and, um, it should be shown on the, on the plans.
Hard surface?
Uh, just cross-section detailed drawings, uh, ordinance requires it for site plans. Particularly, they're show, they're showing permeable pavement surfacing, uh, for, I, I think maybe the drive, portions of the driveways, the, the pathway as well. We wanna make sure that it's, you know, we wanna see how, what's the foundation, what's the depth. The, the draft condominium bylaws and master deed refer to Exhibit B. Uh, that's a requirement by state law for any condominium plan set. Ultimately, I think that'll be the, pretty similar to the approved plan, uh, but we wanna make sure that that'll be provided. Not necessarily, uh, prior to your approval, but it needs to be provided prior to, um, the township's approval of the entire development. Irrigation, just clarify that irrigation will be provided. Landscape maintenance and replacement. Want to make sure that there's a note on the plan saying that the association will be responsible for maintaining and replacing landscaping that's proposed. And then finally, sidewalk, I think we talked about this in January as well. Not on the south side of North River Road, on the north side is a pathway. So, I think it makes sense to waive the side, sidewalk requirement on the south side. There are no other sidewalks are not on the south side of this area, but you would just need to, to do that. So, I think the most significant comments in, in my mind is, is the, the parking for the marina and then the separation between the condos and the marina. Uh, the other comments are relatively minor. But in overall, you know, as a special land use, an overall agreement that this is appropriate for the area generally consistent with the master plan, that's, that's something that you would need to determine this evening.
Thank you.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you very much. To the applicant?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, hello.
I'm Mary McMackin, I'm civil engineer with Stonefield Engineering and Design, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Mark McMackin of McMackin Boating Center, three zero two zero...
So can I ask you to, to speak up, please, since we're minus our...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Audio system.
I'm representing the applicant tonight, Mark McMackin of McMackin Boating Center, of three zero two zero zero North River Road.
And anything that you want to, um, actually, I guess what we really need to do is, is maybe open the public hearing, uh, to get started. And then we'll ask you to share, uh, anything that you, you wanna share regarding the, the plan.
And Adam, is there any chance you can pull up in the plan that emailed you earlier?
Yep.
That actually addresses all of the planning comments.
Can't hear you.
You can.
Okay.
Um, I asked him to pull up in the site plans I sent him a couple hours ago. We just received the planning and engineering review letters this week. So, I worked yesterday on addressing all of the planning comments, and I just emailed that over to Adam today. So I was hoping we could look at those plans instead of the, so that could...
Okay, well, let's get the public hearing open, and then all of that information will be within that. Um, and then we can address each one of those items.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh... May I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion to open the public hearing for case fourteen dash twenty-two PUD McMackin Boating Center LLC.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Mr. Tomonello, thank you, any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Member O'Parka, yes. Member Tomonello?
Yes.
Member Batja?
Yes.
Member Devlin?
Yes.
Member Mulder?
Yes.
Chair Murray?
Yes. Okay, public hearing is now officially open. Okay, so, uh, we have before us all the site plans, all of the, uh, composite floor plans of the, as the planner had stated earlier, a lot of information. So, Mrs. O'Parka, would you like to come up and, and, uh... Okay, share your, share the, share the information about the, about the, the request? And ask your questions to the planner?
Sure, um, you guys have seen this back in January, and I, did you wanna just run through the planning review letter?
You certainly can.
Or, okay. Yeah, if they could do that, um, just those eight comments.
And if I could make sure that you're, you're loud and clear, because since it is a public hearing, they all are going to be paying attention to what you're saying.
Sure.
And they probably will have questions and comments, um, during the course of the public hearing.
Thank you.
When we open it up. Okay?
Um, so the first comment was a request to waive, it says, the development impact statement and the traffic study. I actually did provide a development impact statement, I believe you guys all have that in front of you.
I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so that was provided. The traffic study, we believe we are, um, in line with the requirements to have it waived. Uh, marina use on both sides and the existing use is a bit more intensive than seven residential condos. Um, so we would request that the traffic study be waived. The second item for parcel size, um, you know, the minimum size for PUD is five acres. We're well under five acres, and we are requesting a waiver. Uh, we believe, you know, other than the reasons that were listed here, um, other reasons that justify the request would be, it's consistent with existing PUDs in the township. There is actually one just across the Platoon River on South River Road, that's two acres in size. It's been around for a while, so we believe that, you know, along with the justifications and the existing PUD, that, that's a request. And then the biggest item of discussion would be the marina parking. Um, if you could open sheet C-ten of the plans I sent you today. I provided a parking exhibit of the existing lot and the proposed lot.
Okay.
So existing on site, there's fifty-four boat wells. And there are existing thirty-nine parking spaces. So that comes out to a ratio of point seven spaces per well. Under the proposed conditions, there is going to be forty boat wells on the marina portion and twenty-eight parking spaces, which is also point seven spaces per well. So we're not creating a larger issue than what's existing on site. Um, and a large portion of the site is utilized by boat storage. People who rent boat wells tend to just pull up alongside their boat well, uh, parallel park and leave the gravel lot. The requirement is three spaces per rental well. So, if we were following the ordinance, that would be a requirement today of a hundred and sixty-two parking spaces for this parcel. Um, which you can see, we do have a number of hardships here, being twenty feet wide at that end of our lot. Um, there's really, you know, no compliant way to utilize this development. Um, so we really have to get creative here, and, you know, we've been working with the commission on, you know, getting really creative with this PUD development and maintaining the marina use without creating any issues. Next comment was on signage. Um, no signage is gonna be proposed under this development, and I did add a note to our site plan that no signage is proposed. Screening between the marina and the condos. Um, as Adam stated, a six-foot wall and a ten-foot greenbelt are required. We are proposing a six-foot wall, and then I did want to request from the commission, um, if there's any opportunity of placing the ten-foot buffer on the residential side. I think that the green space would be more utilized by residential development and their common areas, um, as well as the marina. Obviously, parking is more valuable on the marina side, so utilizing all that we can for parking. So I show that on the site plan. Next comment is emergency vehicle access. The fire department provided us with a letter of approval last week, so that satisfies that comment. The open space and park area, um...
Can we go back to the emergency vehicle? Did you receive the Fire Marshal's letter from May twenty-seventh?
I did, yes, and I responded, and then they provided their letter of approval.
Looks like they got another letter that we don't have.
We don't have...
July fourteenth.
I emailed it to them.
Okay.
And she emailed it.
Just today, though, yeah. And then on to the common area, where we previously just had, you know, five picnic tables. Um, I work on a large number of multifamily developments, and one of the hot amenities right now is pickleball. So I have proposed a pickleball court, as well as two picnic tables, and just increase the landscaping a bit to kind of create a park and a good amenity that the residents will actually utilize.
And that's in that space just to the, oh? If you could just cursor, yep, there it is, okay, thank you.
You don't go up to the site plan, like, come on, I said. Uh, pavement cross-sections have also been provided in this revised plan set for the concrete driveways. That's gonna be per McComb County road standards. And then, once you get onto our private site, the driveways are permeable pavers, which I provided cross-sections for, and the pathway as well. And then the patio details will be within the architectural plans once we get into building permitting. Exhibit B was requested, um, it was not in the electronic copy that was submitted, but it was in the hard copies that you all have in front of you, so that should satisfy that comment. The next two are in landscaping, both irrigation and maintenance. Both of those notes have been added to this plan set. And sidewalk, um, you know, we're in agreement, we would obviously like to request the waiver for the sidewalk as it exists on the north side of North River Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, commissioners, um, do you want to hear from the public, or do you want to, uh, talk about what we've just heard first?
I feel like we kind of glossed over the parking, at least on the, the unit size, side for the marina. I'm not sure that, does everybody else understand?
So the... The final calculation was, I think, point seven?
On the, on the marina side, I mean, I mean, on the residential side.
Mm-hmm.
Those, um, those wells, those will just be for the residents, there, none of those will be rented out.
Right, and there are more than fourteen there, but one of them is a bolt hoist and some mechanical equipment. So once all that's removed, there will be only fourteen boat wells, consistent with the development agreement, the master deed, everything states only fourteen.
So each kind of, it's two boat wells.
Correct.
And, and nobody will be parking over on the marina side and locking down to access boats on the condo side.
Okay. Do you want to ask any further questions, or...
I have another question right now, or I can wait to ask it. For the ten feet that you are requesting to be on the condo side, is that adding ten feet to the park that is proposed? Or is that counting the park as that ten-foot buffer?
Uh, it was already the existing common area, so I'll fade into that, but, um, we're still over the square footage for the proposed and required common area without it.
Yeah, I, I wanna clarify, so you, is talking about the, the rental spaces, and on there, you mentioned three spaces per well? And again, it's, it's on there. The three spaces per well is when we're like renting boats, not a rental well.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not three spaces, yes.
That's how we've, we've...
For example, the last applicant that was reported, it's three spaces, if you're actually renting a boat out of that well, renting the well is the normal requirement for, of, once, yeah.
So it should be one space per well, I believe?
Yes.
Leasing versus renting.
Yeah.
But it is, so clearly here with the calculations in front of us now, we, we know that the marina right now is currently underserved in terms of parking, at fifty-four wells with only thirty-nine parking spaces, so there should be fifty-four. They're proposing to, as we said, take away fourteen of those wells for the condo owners who have parking, there's, there's parking in the, you know, their driveways, right? So they, they provide sufficient parking for the condos. So in that sense, you're kind of taking away fourteen of the wells, which leaves forty for the marina. And propose twenty-eight spaces for the marina. So, that's, that's the, this is a planned unit development, you have flexibility, um, but that's kind of your, your deficiency. So there is a current deficiency of twenty-five parking spaces, they're all proposing to have, to reduce that to twelve.
So the, the space that was a, a boat lift and other mechanical equipment, is that service still gonna be provided, like, further down on the marina section, or is that just completely being removed?
Just being removed, I believe.
Gone, okay. Already sold to travel. Okay, I would, just, because if you moved it, I mean, that actually is a rental boat well, it would illuminate.
Well, it's part of the...
Yeah, I'd say if it moved to the marina side, it wouldn't be, it'd be one less parking space, 'cause that wouldn't be a boat well anymore. That's what I was asking.
Other questions? At this time? Why don't we go ahead and, uh, let the public come and, uh, speak? Um, so, please let me just share, uh, we're gonna take notes. We, we encourage the applicant to pay attention and take notes. If something has been mentioned, please don't come up and mention it again, because we've got it. I'm gonna limit you to three minutes each, um, please be kind. And with that, we'll...
Name and address.
Oh, yes, 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 your name and address as you, as you, um, reach the podium. So with that, we'll go ahead and, uh, does anyone want to... So with that, we'll go ahead and, uh, does anyone want to ask any questions? Um, go ahead, please come up.
Can I go up there?
Yes, please.
Okay, what do you need from me?
Your name, your name?
Don Bogler.
And your address?
Two nine eight nine five Riverside Bay Court.
Could you repeat that, sir?
Two nine eight nine five Riverside Bay Court. I'm directly across from the barge that's there. Uh, my question is, uh, I have a couple questions. Number one, I'd like to know what the square footage of these condos are gonna be. Are they gonna be like six hundred feet square footage or are they gonna be two thousand? Uh, are they gonna be two-story or three-story? Cause I haven't seen any of these plans. Uh, the other thing is, uh, is there gonna be an elimination of boat storage during the winter? There was times when, uh, they ran, cause that, the road is so narrow on the other side, uh, west of the barge, you can't get two cars past there. But in the winter, they have stored boats across from me all along that road. My question, are they gonna continue to store boats? And, uh, I guess that's somewhat my question. You did answer that the boat lift is not gonna be in existence, is that correct? So you're not gonna intend to be hauling boats at all anymore? Yeah. Okay? All right, those are my questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Oh, yeah.
And if I could just ask everyone to speak maybe a little bit louder, more than you're used to and clearly, please.
Good evening, my name is Denver Cunningham. I live at two nine nine three nine Riverside Bay Court. My property sits directly behind the barge. Um, I also have three of my other neighbors here. Um, our questions are, are you planning on filling in the river to extend that property to make it in, any wider than it currently is?
Oh, you want to answer right now?
Um, no, uh, if, if you, if, if we could, we're gonna keep track of the, of the questions. We're doing the same, so just ask your questions, you have three minutes and then we'll address everything.
Number one. Also, um, on the far end of it, it is only one lane in, one lane out. There's a ditch between the one lane and the, um, North River Road. So how, how is anyone to go around? Normally, now you see people drive all the way through there and then have to back all the way out. It, it's, and they fall in the ditch and things like that. So how is that gonna be addressed?
So traffic flow.
Correct, the traffic flow, um. And there's, there's also a sunken barge that's been sitting there for years on the far end, and then there's a, a boat that's been sunk. Are those gonna remain there on the far end of the property?
That are properties.
Huh?
Wrong property, that are.
It's on, well, it's on the end that way.
Okay, and we can, and we can, yep, and we can address those.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't wanna, I wanna keep away from the back and forth at this point.
And, um, but I, I'm here with seven of the residents, the first eight houses. I couldn't get ahold of the, the eighth resident because he's currently working out of town, but there's seven of us that start from the marina down, uh, Riverside Bay Court. And none of us, none of us wanna see anything built there. We want it to remain waterfront, do what you do with your boats, but nothing, you know, we don't wanna see anything built there.
Anything else?
No. I do have the, the opposition letters from my neighbors.
Could please, yeah, um, please go ahead and give those to.
And their phone numbers are on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Clark, I live right across the street from the marina. We could, can we, I ask some questions about how good a neighbors they are?
What's your address?
Uh, two nine eight seven nine Riverside Bay Court. Initially, when they first started getting boats in there again, for the first five or six years we were there, there were no boats. All of a sudden, there were boats there. When sailboats showed up all night long, hayards clang, 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 clang. So we called over there and I don't know if this is a new owner or the old owner, but the, somebody would come out and tie up the hayards. Then all of a sudden, about five, six years ago, nobody would tie them up all night long. They're gonna put in a park, are you, what are you planning to do with the park? Is there gonna be concerts or what? Two years ago, they had a concert blasting away all day Saturday into the, literally, like a regular concert, not just music playing, blasting.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, addressing the sunken boat. There is a, there is a boat, or a boat house that is farther down that would be in question whether that was in. But the other boat was right across from our house. My neighbors called, I called, we called the city, we called the Harrison Township, we called the DNR, we called everybody we could, and that boat stayed there and stayed there and stayed there for a long time. Maybe at least six weeks. This is sunk. And, uh, I'd like to know, are you were planning on addressing the, the old marina, which is nothing but an eyesore? Are you gonna put in electricity and water to these boat wells? Or are we gonna just leave it as an eyesore for, we're gonna fix up this end and make it look really nice, make a bunch of money, and then leave the other end?
It's not their property.
We're talking about the other forty wells, which are right directly across from my house. It's about ten wells from their, their office. Their, what I call the pound two boat office, which is really nice, they did a nice job on that.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Well, thank you very much. Next.
Uh, there probably be a few cheering. Jim Sunstock, three one six nine eight, saying one, I'm sure everybody can hear me. First off, uh, I'd like to know who owns the property exactly and who's gonna take care of the actual building of these condos? The property's currently for sale for six hundred thousand dollars and I was told by the sales guy that in fact, that they're waiting to get this, uh, uh, PUD through and then that would be included as part of the PUD. Additionally, this thing violates the forty-foot parking setback, the driveway, from North River Road. These cars are gonna be backing straight out into North River Road. There's a curve right there at that corner that you're coming, if you're going out, you're coming out and somebody's gonna back out in front of somebody, cause that's how they're gonna get out of these places. The actual buildings don't meet the setback requirements. The plans, at least the ones I saw this morning, show three-bedroom condos, not two. So what is it? The ordinance requires twenty-five percent open space on the site. So point seven seven acres, that's three thousand three hundred and fifty-four square feet. And they cite that they're proposing, uh, the open space is two thousand three hundred and seventy-eight feet. Guess what? That ain't even seven percent. Let's assume we include the, uh, the, um, or, no, the park, that's what the park is right there. Let's just assume they include the, uh, the setback on the one side, maybe it gets up to ten percent. The ordinance says twenty-five percent. Again, we got the issue with the point seven seven acres versus five acres. I believe they answered one more question. The driveway coming off of North River Road is concrete, at least that's what they said. The dock issue, again, there's a problem there. There is, I had no development impact statement, apparently they gave you one. There is a requirement or a need for its traffic study. That backing out on a North River Road is gonna create a hazard. In addition, what are they gonna do with these two wells? Uh, the people, these are supposed to be empty nester people. Do they have two boats for two wells? Or are they gonna be renting out one of the wells? There's nothing in the deed restrictions that say they can't. Where are they gonna park? Where are they gonna park when they have guests come over? So if they have a, on their little patio, they have three people come over and they drive one or two cars, where are they gonna park? There is no major screening on the west side, glad he caught that because that, it's definitely required. If you're gonna put a residential area inside a marina, there's a major impact to the residential area. Now, that's on the west side. On the east side, because of the size of the buildings that are right next to there, there won't be a problem, there'd just be a wall standing there. On this site, you can only have five, uh, units if it's, uh, uh, zoned R1D. Under RM1, you can only have five units. Under RM2, so we've been told it's gonna be RM1, it's not. It's gonna be an RM2 because they want seven units. The most important thing, well, I, 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 I figure, I should hear most of this stuff.
You're thirty seconds past your limit, but, um, if you can hurry up, please.
Partly, uh, the master plan currently doesn't take this area as a marina, period. And in fact, in, in the master plan, it says, we don't wanna forfeit any more marinas in this township, cause we're not gonna get any for the next twenty years. So we wanna preserve the marinas that we have. Doesn't look like it's preserving it to me. Uh, they, there was some mentioned in one of the planner's letters about this, uh, this could be a transition site to, uh, to the marinas. Well, the problem is, the transition site, there is not. To the west of this, there's two additional marinas, one of theirs and one of somebody else's. So I guess it's not really a transition site. Also, the design standards for PUDs suggest, suggest, that's a good word, side rear or alley garages, not directly onto the North River Road. That's in your ordinance. Finally, and I guess the thing that I ask is, if you're gonna allow all of these things to happen, and there's a lot, what are we getting out of it as a township? What is the township residents getting out of it? I haven't heard one word about that. Oh, the walkway along the dock for the fourteen houses. Well, guess what? They're gonna need that walkway there whether they put this in or not. So that ain't a public benefit. There was suggestion in the planner's letter last year, or basically at the last meeting, that there be a connection to that little walkway. There's none. So what are we getting out of? I did hear something about, oh, we're gonna fill in the ditch. Only they're only gonna fill in one little portion of the ditch on the point seven seven acres. What's that gonna cost them, a thousand bucks? So I guess, I would like to say that this does not meet the, the site plan or, um, or special land use requirements. Many of them, I could go on, but I'm, I can see you're getting a little antsy.
Well, you are now six minutes in, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Uh, but by the same token, it does not meet the requirements of the PUD. And it's quite clear that this should be turned out. Thank you.
Thank you. Max? Mr. Rodell, how are you?
Yeah, how you doing, everybody? C. William Bardell, three seven eight six five point Rosa, clean-cut, do-gooder boy next door, twenty-five-year resident. I find backing up into North River Road, uh, that is, uh, ridiculous. I could fall down, hit my head on the ground. That, that's ridiculous. The size is ridiculously small. You know, PUD, uh, none of the requirements are met. I mean, I could go on and on. Uh, so I don't, I don't wanna echo the, uh, Mr. Semstock's statements, but, uh, yeah, it's, uh, wrong on every level. There's not enough room, um, just so many things. But, uh, backing up into North River Road, that's a good one. I mean, yeah, yeah. Not enough parking, uh, not the screening, I mean, jeez, I mean, um, no public benefit, so, you know, you guys are the planning commission and, uh, you know, well, we just concern residents, we only pay taxes, we only live here. So, thank you for your time. I, I don't think it's a good idea to put this in here, thank you. I think they just clean up the site and, uh, get all this crap cleaned up and don't put no condos in there, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Jim Wotisha, three one three seven five North River Road. Uh, my concern is, uh, again, just with the traffic, are they gonna have circular driveways or it looks like they're not? I mean, most of the time, on, on, especially on a forty-five mile an hour road, the easiest way to get in and out is a circular driveway. And again, I don't, I don't see it in your plans and, and I just think it's a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is your opportunity to address if there's something that hasn't been mentioned that you would like to add to the applicant's, uh, list and for our consideration. Remember, this is the information gathering stage, so this is where we want to hear from you. You're part of our homework, so. Okay. So do we want to, um, commissioners, are there any, uh, questions that you want to add to the list before we ask the applicant, uh, to address these items?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and just giving us your input on the development. We realize that it is a very unique parcel in a lot of ways and, you know, in order to develop it and have it be anything but boat storage, it's gonna take some creativity, which is why, you know, we're working with the township, with you all. So I jot it down notes to answer everybody's comments and so if you want me to just run through.
Yeah, you wanna start at the top, that would be, that would be fine?
Yeah, so.
So the first applicant addressed size and height?
Mm-hmm, so I believe there was a typo in the site plans that wasn't consistent with architectural, so they are each three-bedroom condos. If you can flip to the floor plan, I think the square footage was around sixteen hundred square feet per condo and they're two-level.
Okay, and storage in the off-season?
Yeah, so storage in the off-season is not going to occur if this PUD were to be approved, it would just be the boat well rentals in the summer.
So, and you've already indicated that you're gonna be removing the equipment?
Right, yeah, the boat, boat hoists was sold, it's being removed. Uh, and that's all incorporated, I think, into the, uh, bylaws and master deed, that language.
Uh, Mrs. Cunningham, uh, uh, filling in the river, asking if they were, if you're planning on, on adding fill to expand the property?
Yes, we are not adding any fill to the river. We will be constructing a seawall along the residence. We will be constructing a seawall along the residential portion, but that's not going to encroach into the river at all.
One lane in, one lane out, traffic flow, and that was actually mentioned two other times. And then there's the ditch, how, how would you address that?
Yeah, so the marina portion, as it exists today, is, you know, twenty feet wide so people do tend to parallel park and either cut through the adjacent site or back out. What we were looking at doing was talking with the western parcel because they also use our parcel to use our driveway because their parcel is also just as narrow. So whether that's an agreement with them and sharing driveways or I've already been working with Macomb County Roads and they approved all of the residential driveways, but asked for a deceleration lane for people turning into their driveways, which we're going to provide. I can also ask them for the option of adding a driveway at the far west end of the marina parcel so that there can be one-way traffic circulating through, no one's backing out, no one's running into ditches. I know there was a lot of concern with people backing out of the driveways of the residential half. While Macomb County Roads did approve the plans and they have no issues with safety, I am willing to get a traffic impact study from our traffic consultants stating the same thing. Just, I really want to have the community on board with this development.
Sunken boats, sunken barge and boats?
Yeah, so the barge is not on our property, but the sunken boat, boat sink, it did happen. It was there for about ten days, the owner had stated, and it was rebooted.
No, no, wrong.
Please, 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 this is, please, this is, we're taking notes. So we, you'll have an opportunity to address after, so please.
So it sounds like it was longer. He's been operating on that parcel for a decade, over a decade, and if one boat sinks and there's one problem, I would call that pretty good. You know, moving forward, obviously, we can ensure that that doesn't happen again and we solve the problem as soon as we're aware of it or the owners aware of it.
Okay, and then Mr. Clark, boat noise from the sailboats, clanking all night long?
Yeah, that can be incorporated into, you know...
Good neighbor, blocking?
And also like in within like the boat leases or also condo development. Someone had mentioned noise in that park, you know, and stating quiet hours on the condo half as well as, you know, ensuring that renters of the boat wells are, you know, aware of the noise and, you know, just having everyone's contact information. So like you said, you make a phone call, the boat's being loud, you tie it up.
Park usage, there was a mention of a concert?
Right, yeah, so again, you know, incorporating quiet hours into the master deed if it's not already in there. I'll have to check with our attorney, but we could add quiet hours to there and then any event would require a permit from the township, I believe, so they, you know, would be aware of anything that would be going on, but I don't anticipate any noise from the park. It's a pickleball court, which is played the wiffle ball. There's no noise happening there and two picnic tables.
Boat house? There was mention of a boat house and then, of course, the sunken boat again.
So the boat house is the one I believe isn't on our parcel, but the sunken boat was, yeah.
The old marina, not there?
They're referencing the barge.
No, Mr. Clark?
But I know the question was kind of, you know, will we be making improvements to the marina side? The quick answer is no. It's a gravel lot, it's consistent with all of the other marinas along North River Road that are actually, I think, in comparison, you know, some are, you know, more cluttered and looking at the site there today, we're going to be eliminating the winter boat storage. They're not going to be staring across the river at any boats any longer. Same with the residential half, you know, looking across the river at a bunch of boats on land versus looking at a modern, two-story condo building. You know, it's not blocking any of the waterfront views, you're on the opposite side of the river. If anything, you know, I think that not only will this development increase property value for a lot of the surrounding areas, but also, you know, I work with a lot of developers and I haven't seen anything in Harrison Township like this in a really long time. And even just talking about it, I think it's really sparking interest with other developers to open their eyes to Harrison Township.
Mr. Semstock, who owns and who's going to care for the property?
Yeah, so is that the marina half or the condo?
Is it separated right now?
Oh, right now, so right now, just the marina is owned by Mark, McMacan Boating Center.
And the condo area?
So that will be part of a agreement, in like an HOA. Will be run all of the residents, there's a maintenance agreement.
Okay, traffic flow? We've mentioned that you talked about working with the neighboring marina.
Yeah, and then for the residential side, we're no longer going to request a waiver for the traffic impact study. I think that that's something the community's really concerned about, so we're going to go ahead and have our traffic consultants get started on that.
You already addressed the fact that it's three bedrooms and not two.
Right.
The open space deficiency?
Yeah, I wasn't sure where that comment came from. So twenty-five percent is required and forty-three percent is provided. So even excluding the potential ten-foot greenbelt, we would still be over the open space requirement.
The point seven, seven acre versus the five acres required?
Yeah, so within the planning review letter, you know, there were a number of reasons why that's recommended to be waived and, you know, PUDs are meant to be flexible developments and actually, everyone here tonight that came from across the river lives right next door to a PUD that is less than five acres. So I think that as long as, you know, we fit the intent of a PUD more so than any other rezone and, you know, like I stated before, you really got to get creative here to develop anything on this parcel and the PUD was decided to be the best route here, so we're requesting a waiver for that lot size.
Dock issues? I believe that was the, the extra wells, are they going to be rented? And if they're going to be rent, if the owners choose to rent them out, are you allowing the owners to rent them and then where will the additional people park?
Yeah, I don't think we would want the extra pedestrian traffic there. So we can, again, add that to the bylaws that the condo boat wells are not to be rented out. We more so saw it as neighbors, friends, family coming over by boat rather than by car. Like you would go to the restaurant, park your boat. Same deal there, kind of like a visitor well for friends and family. And then as far as visitor parking for vehicles, every condo has a two-car garage and a two-car driveway, so it has the capacity for four vehicles at each condo. And it's a three-bedroom condo, so even if that is three separate people with three separate cars, there would still be a spot for a visitor.
No major screening on the west side?
I think we addressed that. We will be putting in a six-foot masonry wall that's going to match the facade of the building. It's not just going to be an ugly concrete wall. Increase the landscaping and then I would still like to request the opportunity to put the ten-foot greenbelt on the residential side rather than the marina side.
The number of units per R1D, RM1 and RM2, you're asking for seven, which fits into the RM2. Did you want to address that?
Yeah, so we are not rezoning to RM2. We would then be technically rezoned to a PUD. The reason that all those zones were listed out were just to show that we weren't going above or beyond any of the zoning uses that are by right. So RM2 would permit seven units. We didn't go above seven units for that reason, just to not exceed any density requirements.
Did you want to address the fact that the master plan indicates that this area should be maintained as a marina or set to be a and only a marina?
Something Adam could maybe speak to that a little bit. I know there were a few comments in here that stated residential uses under certain circumstances by planning. I couldn't find the letter, I don't know if you recall.
I don't, I don't believe it's stated in the master plan. I think it's in the intent statement in the zoning ordinance for the waterfront district that residential is one of the allowable uses in the waterfront district. I, but I, I do believe the master plan does say that, you know, preservation of the existing marinas. There's a lot of discussion in the master plan about marina land use.
Thank you. Transitionary site? Whether or not this is declared a transitionary site?
Yeah, so as far as calling it a transition area, I don't think it means, you know, parcel to the east, parcel to the west. I think it more so means the North River Road corridor as a whole and you go from kind of some residential to the marina, back to residential, which is why, you know, kind of called it that transition zone again with the multifamily.
Design PUD suggests side garages, not, not directly facing North River?
Right, so that would, you know, I don't know if that's technically a waiver being requested, but this lot does have the hardship of lot depth. In order to have any, you know, vehicle parking or garages, it just wouldn't be feasible to have a driveway accessing the building from either side or the rear.
Public benefit?
Yeah, so again, just to the point of property value, down North River Road, there are many of these gravel lots and, you know, you know, commissioner before me tonight, just compliance issues like that. I really think that this condo development with the maintenance agreements is just, the extensive landscaping, the building itself is just, again, a development that Harrison Township hasn't seen in a while. It's the first PUD in, I believe, over a decade. And so just really just sparking that interest for development again and increasing property value with this new development, as well as bringing in more long-term residents. You know, people are going to be buying these condos, living in Harrison Township, hopefully working here, retiring here, or whatever it may be.
Parking, screening, no public benefit, cleaning up the land. You've addressed parking, screening. Public benefit, and correct me if I'm wrong, Miss Young, public benefit is something that each and every resident within the township would have access to and could benefit from.
Oh, okay, so if that would be the pickleball court then, I think that might be a good amenity. I don't know if one exists in the township today.
For only use for the residents then? You're saying that that pickleball court is possibly going to be open to the public?
If that's something the public believes that they would benefit from and that they could use, I think that that would be a good opportunity, yeah.
And then the driveways are only straight out to North River, no circular pattern?
Right, yeah, and again, you know, Macomb County approved it.
Excuse me?
Macomb County Roads did approve the residential driveways back in January and then when we submitted for this formal review, I believe you guys sent the plans back to them and a new reviewer requested a deceleration lane, which we're going to provide. I'm working with them on that. They didn't have any concerns over safety with the driveways, but again, I am going to request the traffic impact study tomorrow and that has a whole section where they overgo the parameters of safety.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you wanted to add based on what you heard tonight?
Nope, I don't think so. Just thank you again for the community members that did come out. I really do appreciate the input and we will take all of it to heart to get this development approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions or comments based on what you've heard?
So I do have a question, maybe you can help me on the print. So at the, at the, where the driveway ends, is that the road shoulder? I guess I'm...
Should I step back off her?
Sure, please.
Yeah.
Adam, do you have, I know you have updated plans that we don't have. Does it have a better view showing where the actual North River Road, like, road surface is?
So you can see the lighter line to the west of that end driveway if you keep going? Yeah, so that's actually the edge of the shoulder, the road is further up. So the driveways are basically over the ditch. The ditch is kind of centered in the driveways, if that helps.
So, so, so from the end of the driveway to the actual road, would you say it was like eight feet?
Still a small shoulder, yeah, yeah, I'm not sure the exact dimension, unfortunately.
So I guess my question, this is such a question. Would you be, I mean, would you be opposed to curbing, you know, up by the road with the required, I don't know, eighteen inches or twenty-four inches from the road commission? And maybe making a driveway at the east end and the west end where people would back up into that area and have to go out to the left or to the right to avoid cars backing up directly into North River?
So creating a forced backup area?
Right, so you back up and then you have to go either left or right and then to a driveway either end of the complex to eliminate people backing up right into South River or into North River?
Because I'm not sure entirely what you're depicting, but I think that would all be within the right-of-way. The entire concrete approach is all within the right-of-way, so I'd have to ask Macomb County if they let us pave essentially all of the right-of-ways so that people could back up and then...
Yeah, so Mr. York, you understand what I'm saying? I don't know if you have your mouse or you can sort of...
I think I'm, I think, yeah, Amanda, what do you?
I think he's saying, yeah, I'll just get up real quick. I think he's saying curb along here and then create this as, you have to back out and either go that way or that way.
Yeah, you have to go to the left or to the right, so you have two driveways. One is returning to the complex. So now what you do is you back up onto that area and then you can go left or right. And that, that prevents cars going right out into the...
But the ditch is there.
So we're filling the ditch, I'm just that end unit, I'm not sure...
But you're filling the ditch, right, so that should all be flat to the road.
Yeah, it is, yeah, there's no issue with paving it. I'm just trying to think like functionally, residents, all...
Just asking a question, I'm just trying to eliminate a, you know what I mean?
There's a similar development in Ira Township, I want to say, where there's maybe tin condos and they have a drive similar to that, so...
Like after the driveways?
It's where the tin fish used to be up there.
Is it a one-way drive, like in entrance?
There's one entrance and they, they just, and one exit and they just have that, that road.
So it's a one-way? So they have their own private, essentially?
Yeah, because it's not that, not that long.
I mean, they might have a lot more space there, but it would be something to look at. I have no people who live there.
They are always pulling out versus backing out, right?
Then it creates an opportunity, yeah, so that's kind of how they have it. And they just have the two, a really small driveway in front of their house.
Yeah, the only issue there is their drive is entirely on their property. Ours would be entirely within the Macomb County right-of-way, but, you know, we're already paving those driveways and I am meeting with them to discuss the deceleration lane, so I can propose that to them and see what, what they suggest.
Just a thought, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I like it, yeah.
Because it is, it is a concern, I think, because it is a high-speed road.
And they do also have two boat wells per, per unit, but they are like used like she said, when they have friends come over by boat versus by car. They're not...
They're not available for rental for...
They're not people who are renting out a slip, an extra slip.
Master deed and bylaws affect them a lot.
Yeah, one for your dinghy, you know, one for the big boat, one for your...
It's their visitor wells, I just like to see, like a timeframe. That way they can't just have someone come in there and say that they're a visitor forever, so...
That could be added to the bylaws.
Yeah, something in the bylaws.
And then I think the only other question I had, and again, I understand these are preliminary, but the driveway is not as wide as the paver pads. So if you're, if you're really using those for two parking spots, I would think they would need to be as wide as the pad. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, Macomb County has maximum driveway width, so that's kind of the reason it's shown like that. But again, I think we can open that discussion with them when I meet with them.
Parking, because I would argue that you only have two parkings, or one parking space without, with the driveways designed like that.
Yeah, I'll discuss with Macomb County and whether it's the full drive or rewiden the driveways. I think that there's definitely a better solution here.
So I had a question with your comment about possibly making the pickleball court public use. So where would the public park and how would that be accessed?
I think in January too, we had, when we talked about that park, we talked about the potential for, if it was going to be a public park, having like an access to the pathway from the pathway across the street.
I did pose that to Macomb County and they were not a fan, just adding a signal there for the pedestrians due to the speed of the road. Yeah, we'd have to look at parking because again, I guess it comes down to your guys' determination of the parking waiver and, you know, reserving two spaces for the pickleball court, bringing us further deficient into the parking, but, you know, again, we've been deficient in parking and operating. But, you know, again, we've been deficient in parking and operating for over a decade with no issues, so I don't foresee any issues with parking. But we're willing to dedicate two spaces if, you know, a waiver is something you're willing to grant for parking.
It's my understanding the pickleball courts at Metro Beach are like so jam-packed that you can't get in there for, it's like, yes, yes.
It's a hot spot.
It's very hot. So I think it's beneficial to the residents, but it may cause more parking issues outside.
So just to clarify, my, my interpretation of public benefit doesn't really include property value increases. I mean, that's basically any new development. We're looking for something specific like this that's an actual benefit to all the public. Just my interpretation, if you understand.
I think we have an access to boat wells.
I think before you go, you know, full speed on that idea of a public benefit, it's a condo development, it's a common element. I, I don't know. It's not for me to decide before, I'm not really sure if that's something that's allowed. Because it's a common element of a condominium development, not necessarily open to the public. So they're taking on more maintenance, more liability, because they're allowing the public to come on to the common element of those people's property.
And that property is also part of their twenty-five percent, forty-three percent open space? So, yes.
Regardless of that, I'm just saying it's a common element of a condominium, so.
So if it is like a public amenity, could be like a med or, you know, master deed bylaws, maintenance agreements, where the township would then be responsible for the maintenance of just a pickleball court because it's a public amenity, while the rest of the development is maintained by the HOA?
Yeah, I'm not sure the township would want to do something like that, but...
Are there any other suggestions to a public amenity?
I was just, for your benefit, I'm not really sure that when, you know, this gets back to your legal counsel, that's something that would be allowed.
Do you guys know what the public benefit is to the PUD across the River by Seattle?
I'm confused.
I know, it was a decade ago.
Across the River. Looks like a Marina.
Dockside, right?
What, the PUD?
Yeah. When I called it up, I was confused at what that PUD was.
Pretty sure it's Dockside.
It's a Marina, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how is a Marina a... So I mean, is PUD, is benefit, is it always considered so literally? Because it seems to me that one benefit is of different PUDs could potentially be providing a type of housing that is not available right now in the township. So to me, I look at it not just so literal and so, on such a micro level, but also just that bigger level of housing is start, is, could potentially be challenging to find in the township a newer, a newer unit that isn't an older housing unit that we have. I mean, I think studies have shown that some of the housing is short for what we anticipate our population to be going forward, and particularly our senior population. So I'm not saying that this meets and enough, but when I think of public benefit, it's not literally a pickleball court that anybody can use. It's a bigger concept.
And I would agree and say that the ordinance supports that. It doesn't actually use the terminology "public benefit" in the planned unit development section. It does clearly say what the purpose of the planned unit development is. And it speaks to public benefit in a general manner, but it says specifically, or the specific objectives of this section, planned unit development are to, and it lists five things, which I think all could be considered part of the public benefit. Requiring innovation in land use and variety in design, layout, and type of structures. Preserving significant natural resources. Achieving economy and efficiency in the use of land, natural resources, energy, the provision of public services and utilities. Require the preservation of useful open space. Permit flexibility in the placement, lot area, and building type regulations. It doesn't say that all of these have to be achieved, but just list those as, you know, what are the things that this section attempts to achieve? And I would say that, and that, that's kind of the definition of public benefit, at least as far as what the ordinance would say. So I think to your point, it doesn't mean a pickleball court has to be for, you know, the general public.
And that's kind of what I was getting at, not just saying property improvement, but addressing those issues, what is it bringing to the community by doing this development based on those statements? That it kind of lists those five state areas to look at.
I would argue that the permeable pavers are somewhat of a public benefit because right now stormwater is just rolling off that site right into the river, and it's a great opportunity. Some of our V1A districts, we want to encourage these types of installations, and we don't have anywhere in the township to say, we have these, and this is what it looks like, at least now here. When someone comes into one of these other districts where we're saying, we encourage you to use permeable surfaces, we can say, we have spots where they are in use, and they are practical, and they aren't too expensive, and...
Yeah, so I guess just to summarize all of that, you know, for all those reasons, and the parking, you know, the pickleball remains, you know, private amenity for the condo association. And then I think the public benefit comes into play with the green infrastructure, improving stormwater for the site. While, you know, they're not required, it is something that we're providing to the community, as well as, like you said, there's not a lot of new housing, new condo developments, let alone developments with amenities like the pickleball and outdoor park. So stating that as our public benefit.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? Okay.
Ma'am Chair?
I'm sorry?
Just wanted to ask before we close the public hearing if there are any questions on the engineering letter?
I do not have an engineering letter in front of us. I'm not sure that any of us received a copy of the engineering letter. If Mr. Young has, you have it?
I also have responses to all comments. We're willing to satisfy all of them, provide responses. We can do that tonight if you wish.
I know, I do not know, I do not have a copy. Mr. Young, do you have, are you able to pull it up on?
I do.
Thank you.
Maybe Dave can summarize?
It's not that extensive, I can...
Yeah, sure, that would be great, thank you. Yes, please.
Okay. The first comment we have is on sanitary sewer. There's actually two public sanitary sewers in this area. One's a gravity main and one's a horse main. We just want to make sure that both are shown on the site and that they connect to the correct one. There's a comment about the sewer services and the water services for the building. They're showing one sewer service and one water service to the building. That's not allowed for multiple units that would be under different ownership. So they have to show individual sewer and water services to each unit. We have to have a water main and a sanitary sewer easement shown over that portion of the sanitary that's outside the right-of-way. There's a water service shown that's extending down to the boat wells. It's an existing water service. And it's shown, kind of wrapping around that end unit on the west and then going out to the boat wells. And the question was, is that water service serving boat wells that are owned on the condo association, in the Marina, or both? The issue there is that you can't have a service for one property running across a different property. It has to serve as just of what's on, the property that's on. In reviewing the FEMA floodplain maps, it does appear that there is potentially a small area of floodplain on the property. And we were asking the applicant if they could address that. And we noticed that there were no provisions in the project for stormwater management. And we wanted to have the applicant contact the Macomb County Public Works Office to determine what requirements, if any, would be required for stormwater management. Since we're directly adjacent to the river, I don't know that detention's going to be required. You know, to slow the water down before it gets to the river, when it's only going ten feet to the river, doesn't make a whole lot of sense necessarily. But they may want some more water quality improvements on the site, and I'm not sure what those would be. So we just suggested that they contact the Macomb County Public Works Office for that.
Thank you.
So those are all the comments we had. I guess the only other comment that I would offer is in relation to the acceleration or deceleration lane that's being required by the road commission. That's going to shorten up those driveways, and so we have to look and see, you know, if it's going to make the driveways, eight to fourteen feet narrower, so, or shorter. So then is that going to limit the amount of parking? Are we going to get a reduced spot? And I'm not sure, but that dimension would be just something to consider. So those are all the comments that we have.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Well, if they're able to have a joint driveway as discussed, and potentially they would not require the deceleration lane. But I, myself, have questions about, you know, that conversation with the road commission.
Yeah, I'm setting a meeting with them. I know my thought would be if they're going to require that deceleration lane, just bring it all the way to the property line, maybe, and that is utilized as their drive and curb it. But I don't know how they would feel about any curbing in the right-of-way. But again, I'll discuss with Macomb County roads and make sure that they approve what's designed.
That example would be, you know, something that could communicate what you're trying to achieve that is shown from Ira. Okay. Anything else, Commissioners?
I guess just really quick to address a couple of those. Both sanitary and water will provide separate leads for each unit. The stormwater piece, Macomb County now has, you know, one of the strictest regulations. I actually worked on the very first project that they approved under their new regulations earlier this year. I have a good relationship with Daryl at the county. And sites under one acre don't require any stormwater, but I can send him this plan and get a letter of no objection just to satisfy that requirement.
I think the permeable pavers, the one bottom down, go back, there's no detention required, will provide a little bit of slow...
We're greatly reducing the impervious area. It's almost a hundred percent impervious right now, and under this development, fifty-seven percent impervious.
Okay, anything else? Commissioners, any questions? This is a info gathering. Okay. Do you want to have a seat, then? So since this is still a public hearing, and based on all the conversation that we've heard tonight, if the public has anything else that they want to bring up, something that hasn't been discussed, a question that hasn't been asked, or if you need clarification on something that has been addressed, now is your time. And again, restricting to three minutes. Mr. Sun's dark. Again, no repeats, and please be kind.
I didn't stumble that time. Jim Sunstock, 31698 San Juan, does that count towards my three minutes? I, I'd like to know exactly what is defined as open space in our ordinance. The reason I ask that is because my understanding is it does not include setbacks of any kind. So if it doesn't include setbacks, on that side over there, which is showed on the print as seventy-eight feet, there's a twenty-foot setback. Even if we went to ten feet, it's still sixty-eight feet. Sixty-eight feet, and does it include, does that area include the area of the building? Because what they're doing, it's not open space when they, they put all that landscaping up in front and knock on, or so that you can't see into it from North River Road. And that shows on the print. So I, the numbers that I use were fifty-eight feet wide by forty-one feet deep. That's the depth of the buildings. If you take that, that comes out to twenty-three hundred and seventy-eight feet, which is seven point one. And I was even willing to give a little bit either way, but that comes out to seven point one percent, not forty-three percent. So if you would explain just exactly what the setbacks and what you can include as open space. Are they including as open space, for instance, those private patios? That's not open space to anybody. And in addition, if you read the planning, if you read the PUD ordinance, and one of the requirements for the open space on a condo development is that it be accessible to everybody immediately, read it. So that the open space is supposed to be maybe out in front of the places or maybe behind, but they can't do it in the river. So that's the question I have. You know, if you're going to tell me it's forty-three percent, you better explain just exactly what it is, because I read the print just as well as any engineer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sunstock. Forty-three seconds left. Wow! We'll take it off your first one. Anyone else? Any additional questions or comments or clarifications? Okay, Commissioners, anything from you? Since we are still in the information gathering stage, we have, we, we have, I don't want to say set of precedents, but we have commonly kept the public hearing open until the next meeting. And that allows us to address any additional items if we are asking for any additional items to the applicant tonight. So Commissioners, where do you want to go with this? Since we, well, why don't I, why don't I go ahead and knock on Mr. Young's door? Are you able to address the open space question? As it's written in our ordinance, my, you have it open?
Yeah. The ordinance calls for twenty-five percent of the net developable area to be open space. It also calls for each unit to have access to it. The pathway along the river would be the access to the open space. I would say, love to see the, you know, updated calculations to make sure that, you know, it's clearly shown and provided.
So the site plan that we've been provided, is that different from the site plan that you reviewed?
You mean this right here?
It is...
Yeah, this was provided just today. I have not reviewed this plan.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the only change to the site plan is just the screening wall and the pickleball court. That was the only revision here.
Everything else is additional?
Yeah, and just one more touch on the open space about how setbacks don't count. The setbacks shown are for the underlying zone, which is waterfront. Just for the sake of conversation, PUDs don't have any required setbacks. So you, like, as I stated, it's the entire developable area up to the right-of-way line, which is the edge of the permeable driveways.
Ma'am Chair, I know that you were questioning, like, what do you want to do at this point? I know it's up to you to keep the public hearing open or not, or you could close it now, and then you still have a couple of things to discuss irrespective of the fact that I know you want to review it and get the new site plan in front of you, so I know you will adjourn it. But you still have to, you know, I know the petitioner said they will provide the traffic impact statement, so that question's answered for you. But you had a few other things to just, you know, tidy up as to, you know, you've got the development impact statement, and I think there was one other, if you wanted to waive the sidewalk and the size of the project as well. Like, at least get those things out of the way and then move forward for the next site plan to come your way.
Yep, we can certainly address those.
And then I also wanted to point out too, since it's the first PUD in a while, that the applicant knows that eventually when it gets approved, either recommended here and at the board, we will tie you to whatever elevations, whatever you're submitting, that's going to go in that PUD agreement and the master deed. So as far as the agreement goes, yes, they're in draft format, and that's fine. But as far as all the details, they still need to be ironed out based on this process, so.
Thank you. So yes, we can address those, those couple of open issues right now and get those out of the way. Okay, so the applicant has agreed to request, perform a traffic study. They're not going to ask for a waiver of that. And I think we're probably all in agreement to that. Okay. New site plan, we are going to be presented with that. The parking requirements, that's an issue. The waiver of the sidewalk on the, I want to say the north side, or the south side. So do we want to go ahead and address that now? Since that's a common, that's a common thing that we've done. Since that's a common, that's a common thing that we've done, we've passed on several.
Yeah.
I think that can be addressed now. I mean, my personal feeling is it's unnecessary. It's similar to other projects we waived it on, so.
Yeah, sidewalk that goes nowhere. Serves nobody.
There's a half available on yours.
Yeah, and we did similar decisions in the same geographical situation.
Okay, so do we want to address each one of these items separately? Or do we want to, uh, uh, put them in the form of a motion?
One, the contractor is required to call the appropriate authority for notice of construction slash information.
Sorry, I was distracted by that. Okay, so, well, why don't we just go ahead and, and address the sidewalk?
So the sidewalks we're talking about, are we just going to address only the sidewalk?
We can right now, that's why I'm asking.
The other two issues.
You want to address all three at once? We can do that, it's efficient.
I mean, I'm hesitant on the parking waiver, just, we've gone around and around on parking for other sites and,
So the other two items.
I don't know that it can be solved, so.
That, yeah, no, yeah, creative or otherwise. Um, the other two items that I have on the list are acknowledging that the landscaping maintenance and replacement will be added to the master deed and bylaws. Um, the irrigation, the site plan must clarify that.
I think that, I think, ma'am Chair, if we could, the waivers, that would be pertinent to the applicant, so they know, would be, uh, they've already said they will provide a traffic impact study.
Yep.
Will you waive the remainder of the development impact statement? Less the traffic impact study, which they will be providing. So that's one, the development impact statement. I'm sorry, they have that, so that's out the door.
We have the development impact statement.
So then it is, it's down to waiver of the sidewalk on the south side. And if you want to rule, if you want to waive the minimum five acre for a non-residential PUD, to allow one point two five acres. Uh, you don't have to do that tonight, but that, those are really the two waivers. The other items like irrigation, they have to provide it on the plan anyway. You don't need to rule on that.
And not the parking, you know?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
The green belt on the side of the residential rather than the?
Correct, right, yeah. So that could all be done as part of approval of the, the PUD. So really, it's just those two, two waivers, if you want to rule on either one of those.
So the waiver of the sidewalk, let's go ahead and rule on that right now. I'll, I'll take a motion. If you want to address it separately.
I would like to address it separately.
Okay. Did you want to make a motion to address that?
Do you need to make a motion?
I don't know, or can we just agree to waive that and announce that we are waiving it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we are in agreement that we will waive the sidewalk. And then we already know you're asking for the traffic study, we're asking for the traffic study. We're not waiving any other part of the developmental impact statement. We, we want it all. I think we want it all. Um, and then the other waiver was the property, uh, point seven seven versus the five acre.
Would you, yeah, it, are you going to waive the strict requirement for the five acres? Now, it doesn't mean you're approving the, the planned unit development agreement, obviously.
Right.
So really, I guess they would consider it as being, you would, you're willing to consider a one point two five acre planned unit development in this case. Not that you're approving it, but.
You're not approving the, the application as a whole, you're just approving that to move forward. It could be dead in the water if you don't approve that.
You're approving one point seven seven, not one point two five.
I'm sorry.
Point seven seven, point seven seven.
Point seven seven, yeah.
Okay, so let's talk about that.
I'm gonna go first because that's the area that concerns me.
Okay.
As I stated at the last meeting, and not that it's really all that critical for today, I was concerned then, and I still remain concerned, that, um, given that this is a very unique site, as a matter of fact, I think the applicant used the word unique, used the word special. I don't disagree, it's a very, very unique piece of property, so I don't disagree with that at all. I was always more of the opinion that a piece of property that is that unique, would probably support a really unique, creative solution. I find the solution in front of us as very, if I do find it, if I looked at the elevations individually and I didn't put it on the piece of property, I would find it to be very acceptable. So as I, as I, as I wrestled with this over the last couple of months, knowing that I felt this way, that I just struggled with putting this development on this very unique piece of property, which started me, you know, that gets us to the whole waiver. At the end of the day, in my mind, you can't get past that, you can't get anywhere, in my mind. So I, that's what I was just, I was just kind of rereading here again, for, at least for where I'm sold. So I'm going to be reading from our, our ordinance here. To some extent, it may be redundant with what Mr. Young has said, but, it says a planned unit development, PUD, concept is intended to provide a greater degree of flexibility in the regulation of land development and the arrangement of uses. Through this option, more creative approaches to development can be utilized, which take advantage of the special characteristics of the land than would otherwise be possible through strict enforcement on the ordinance. So those words start to support, or my, my head is going with this, that it's a, it's a great solution. I mean, it looks nice and everything, but I'm not sure this solution itself is representative of what a PUD is, in my opinion. I heard the applicant use the word creative quite a bit, which is, which is awesome. But what struck me is that the, the term creative was only used in the reference of, I got the PUD. That was the whole creative part of this whole solution, is I got a PUD. Nothing within the PUD I found to be creative. Nice, granted, I'm good with the nice and, I didn't find it to be creative, in my opinion. So, and, and I likewise think that if I'm looking at this size, if our ordinance says, um, minimum of five acres, in my opinion, I could have heard an argument for going to three or four, but we're going to less than one. I mean, that's like pretty substantial in the intent of our own ordinance. It's, that's like a major departure from it. So that's why I'm just struggling with that whole, the whole concept of the size really bothers me. Let me continue reading though, to provide some evidence of, where I'm struggling with this solution on this piece of property, which is what we have to deal with. Um, as Adam has already stated, but now that I've kind of reintroduced the definition, I'm going to read those five, require innovation in land use and variety in design, layout and types of structures, while still preserving the intent and integrity of the township master plan. So again, I get, I'm getting hung up with, you know, innovation, variety. I'm not sure I see it, other than I see something, that's a nice, I'm going to keep on saying that. Preserve significant natural resources. Um, I'm not persuaded in one way or the other that one, I could move past that. Achieve economy and efficiency in the use of land, I'm not sure that's occurring here. Respecting though that it is a development, that, um, still, one can argue that development is good, and I'm not, I'm not against that. Require the, require the preservation of useful open space. So that we're starting to circle back into that definition of open space and is it useful or not. And permit flexibility in the placement of lot area and building type regulations while assuring the application of sound site planning standards. So those, those are something the planner can work out. I read on, uh, section, it's going to be B. It's section seventeen point three three, subparagraph B point three. Says all requirements of the underlying zoning district, including but not limited to setbacks, uses and density regulations shall be met by the proposed PUD, unless specifically waived by the planning commission. So is that another waiver we have to address?
It would be if you're approving the planned unit development, and, and they're required to spell out what they're asking for waivers. You, it would be a part of that approval, essentially you're allowing for them to not comply with the forty-foot front yard setback, things of that nature.
Right, I, I just, what struck me, um, you know, the applicant said that none of these zoning setbacks require here. And it's like, no, it says they do unless you get a specific waiver. I won't get into the words, uh, I know everybody here on the commission, under that same section, it does give the criteria for submitting, for evaluating the waiver, so we won't need to debate that. Continuing through that section, it, uh, reference says the planning, and if you're, if anybody wants to follow it, it's like it is, subparagraph C three, subparagraph C point three, point C. Planning commission shall review the positive and negative impacts of the PUD to determine if the development provides benefits that substantially outweigh that, which would be achieved under the conventional standards of zoning. So earlier on, applicant talked, which, which we understand, another route to do this would have been just rezoning. All right, that's like, that would have been the simple approach. The PUD, by way of the definition of the reading, which is a creative way to solve something that you couldn't clearly solve under rezoning. But then if you're going to do that, then you should be providing substantial benefit because you're getting this flexibility in, in design to go through the PUD process. So you're like, so, so one of the solutions could just been, just wow, let's look for a rezoning and just stick with it in the zoning and do what you do. So that, that kind of is sticking with me too, that I'm not sure I found personally that the PUD process has provided any additional positive benefit in lieu of just a rezoning. I haven't found the, because I could have got this under rezoning, right? So what, what is the big positive thing we get out of this? Continuing on, some of the, some of the items that were bothering me under residential design, it says again, uh, a significant amount of passive and or active open space has been provided. Development provides open space in a manner which encourages future linkage of open space to adjacent parcels. As stated earlier, it clearly states here, dwelling units shall have side rear or alley entrance garages and not open directly to the street. And the, the last item here, which I do find the applicant has achieved, it says applicant has provided an architectural theme which promotes varied architectural design. So I incurred check mark, I thought that architecturally, the buildings solved the intent, but I, I still think that the size is, it's a problem to me as of today.
Thank you for addressing those. Anything else that you want to add?
No.
Commissioners, did you want to, um, comment on Mars? PUD information, uh, in his opinion, opinions, I guess, based on?
Well, I guess I'd like to offer that, um, it seems though, that some of those, um, requirements could potentially be boilerplate that has been borrowed from other communities that maybe don't have the river as one of the boundaries. So I think in that case, there is some, um, there is a need to look at it uniquely because of that. It's not just, you know, in a, in a traditional development grid, street pattern somewhere. Um, I also question that five acre is an arbitrary number also from some boilerplate other ordinance somewhere? I mean, how many parcels do we have in the township over five acres that someone could potentially apply for a planned unit development? So I think that the intent of a planned unit development is not only to give the applicant flexibility to work within the confines of the site, but also the, um, the township to have flexibility in, um, obtaining that development agreement with those items that should be addressed, given the particular nature of the site. So for me personally, I am not so hung up on the five acre number, and I am not so hung up on the means of, um, entry to the site because of the river in the back. All the other residential development along our river has those driveways because is the river the front or is the river the back? So it's just unique to this area. So personally, I don't have as much of an issue with that. And again, just the, the way the site is now, with zero, um, permeable space, it's, you know, not the most attractive, um, looking site now. And there just isn't that much that could potentially happen here that I think that lends itself to the flexibility that a planned unit development could give not only the planning commission, but the trustees in working through the items on a development agreement. So I'm not sure whether in a regular rezoning, we'd have the ability to look at landscaping and, um, the materials of the building and the materials of the pavers. I mean, that to me is an area where we could enhance this, the site and, and make it something that could potentially be created. So that's, that's what I feel about the five acres. I don't want to get hung up on the actual number, it's more what's going to happen.
Anyone else?
I just would echo a lot of what Danielle said on the site, on the size. I mean, I'm not familiar with, that maybe I should have done more homework on the PUD across the river, but the fact that that is a marina that looks like every other marina that we have in Harrison Township strikes me as, in the past, we've given PUDs for things that aren't a traditional sense of, of PUD. And I could do more homework on that, figure out what the public benefit of that was. And the site, as it says, a lot of the complaints that we heard from the residents are non-compliance issues that we just have gone over on these other properties that are very similar on South River Road. And so what is a, I guess, what else can be done with these properties other than these gravel marinas that don't comply with any, any standards for? I mean, this one even has a floating office like the other one on South River Road. Which, you know, when we approved that floating office or talked about that floating office, we all were not, you know, there's not a lot of these floating offices or that kind of thing. So I guess, you know, there's issues on site as it is now that are just going to continue probably, unless they come in for some other marina use that we can require. And I think Harrison Township is unique. Everything about us is unique. We're boat town, we're, this is a, a kind of development for boaters. I mean, you can have your friends come up and bring, come up the river on their boat and visit your house. Where else in the world can you do that? Opposed to driving your car, getting on the river and driving your car. So there's a lot of creative things that we have to deal with here.
So I, I agree also, I'm not so hung up on the size, but I also agree, it's a nice solution, but I want to see something. solution, but I want to see something very unique to a unique piece of property. So I agree with both of you.
I, I, um, I, it's not that I'm hung up on the size, but I kind of am. I, I am not one to pack a site, I'm not one to agree to pack a site from end to end, from corner to corner, and, and, I mean, I understand, I understand why. I, I just think that, that doesn't create a good look, even though we are a unique community. I mean, Harrison Township is a mix of cottages and homes and large homes and small homes and large lots and small lots and grandfathered in. I, point seven seven of an acre, seven units, that's a lot. I think it's a lot. Okay, so let's go back to, and thank you to whoever loaned me this letter, you're not getting it back.
They have my notes on there.
They have all my notes, all my notes are on here. Okay, so, all right, so, okay, so we agreed, we agreed to waive the, whatever, if, if we're moving forward with this, I guess really, we kind of have to decide that because otherwise we don't even need to bother with the waivers or the discussion or the details. So, why don't we make that determination first and then we can address the other issues? So, so, back to the original question, what do you want to do at this point? Do you want to table this item? Do you want to leave the public hearing open? Do you want to deny? Do you want, where do you want to go with this? Do you, do you need further discussion questions from the applicant?
So I would want to table and leave the public hearing open, but I am comfortable letting them know that we waive the sidewalk and the size requirement. We're not approving the PUD, but we're giving them the opportunity to come back, again, using that same footprint. So that, that's where I stand.
Okay. Anyone else?
I agree with Commissioner Mulder.
I don't think it would be out of character for me to say that I agree with the first part and I disagree with the second part.
I, I, I am in agreement with tabling the item, and I agree with Ms. Mulder that we can certainly declare the approval for the waivers and keep the public hearing open. The size is an issue for me though.
Are we motioning?
I, I will make a motion to, at this point, table, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of the case line.
Right here.
Case number fourteen dash twenty-two dash PUD, and keep the public hearing open, but also waiving the requirement for the sidewalk and at this point waiving the acreage requirement.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, 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 excuse me? So table till the next meeting, keep the public hearing open, waive the sidewalk, and what was your other thing?
So that's, we can waive the requirement, we're not approving the PUD, we're just waiving the size requirement.
Right, oh, I see what you're saying. The sidewalk and the...
The sidewalk and the size requirement. We're not approving the PUD, we're just at this point waiving so they can move forward with their design to bring it back after we've taken it from there.
I'll support.
Is that fair?
So that's your motion?
Yes.
And Ms. Devlin, you support?
Discussion.
Yes, discussion on the motion first.
Do we have to today address the waiver on the site size?
You don't have to. You can just table the whole thing and then you'll have a full board to make those waiver decisions.
And a month to, to do our additional homework, to investigate additional PUDs within the township and otherwise. I mean, like, I always, I always, and I always liken this to, this is our information gathering. This is where we're trying to collect all parts and pieces, get everything in front of us. It's rare that we make a decision the first night, and I think if you know us, you know that.
So Ken, I was asking because, as opposed to the sidewalk, which was fundamentally unanimous, I mean, I, there was really no debate about it, it made sense. I'm still struggling with it. I'd have been more comfortable, have more time to think about it a bit more. So I would not, I would, I could not support, wanted to need to support it. I'm, I'm still struggling. We don't have to decide today on the site size. Maybe we defer, but then maybe, you know, if, if everybody except me is okay with it, then I guess you move on with it too. So maybe the motion, we just keep it going and we'll see where it goes and...
But just to add to that discussion, I mean, it's not, what we're approving is that we'll consider this planned unit development within five acres. We're not approving seven units. So they could come back with fewer units, am I right on that? Yeah. So it's not like you're agreeing to the density, you're just agreeing, we are just proposing that it's, we can move forward with, allow them some kind of development in a planned unit development form within a parcel that is less than five acres. We're not agreeing to the density, we're not, the density will change.
We're not agreeing to this plan.
Nope, and that's my intent, is that we're not approving this or agreeing to the plan, but we're willing to move forward with those two waivers so that they can move forward with the design, to see what they can design. That's my intent.
I think, you know, we don't want to waste their time, in my mind, we don't want to waste their time and money going forward with another site plan if we're going to say we're not waiving that, the size requirement. There is the discussion of density and stuff like that, but if we're totally inflexible on doing any PUD on this site at this size, then...
Well, I like Mr. Batch's term, creative, and this piece of property requires creative consideration. And Ms. Devlin's comment that, you know, the township being on the river dictates that creativity is required, needed.
Well, I guess we got the mo, we are going to have a discussion of the motion, so we got, we got the element at this point.
All right, so let's go back to, yep. All right, any more discussion on the motion to table this item until the next meeting, keep the public hearing open, waive the sidewalk requirement and waive the site requirement at this point to allow the applicant to move forward, not with this site, not, we're not approving this site, we're not encouraging this site, we're just allowing, we're just giving a waiver to any consideration of a PUD on this piece of property. So motion by Mr. Mulder, seconded by Ms. Devlin, any additional comments? Roll call please.
You know, I, I just, I know that you're trying to explain yourself, but really, you're only making a motion. You have a site plan that's submitted to you that you haven't seen yet, so that's still coming.
Right.
The only thing you're doing right now is to table and waive the two requirements, the sidewalk and the size of the pod.
Correct, but I want to make it clear...
Yeah, to the, nothing's approved yet, it's just those two waivers, and you're still moving forward with the review.
Correct.
You haven't made any recommendation to the township for yet.
No recommendations, no.
Okay.
So, roll call please.
Member Mulder?
Yes.
Member Devlin?
Yes.
Member Batja?
No, only as it pertains to the site size.
Member Tomlin?
Yes.
Uh, Member O'Parka? Yes. Chair Murray?
Uh, no, and in agreement with Mr. Batja. Motion carries.
Thank you guys so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. And we still have, we still have business to attend to, so those who are leaving, please do so quietly. Thank you. So Parker, would you please read our last item of the PUD?
Case number seventeen dash twenty-two dash RZ Mastermind HT LLC 24531 Henry V. Joy Boulevard.
This is a conditional rezoning from a mobile home community to industrial in order to make the property more marketable. Is the, is the applicant, Mr. Ginnon, please come forward.
The applicant's representative is here.
How are you?
I'm good.
Nice to see you again.
I got a stiff leg sitting there so long ago.
Well, we're glad you're still with us.
So I submitted this application for this rezoning for this 26,000 square foot piece at the corner of Lenfestie and Joy Boulevard in Harrison Township. Basically, in our petition, in the supporting documents, it's virtually impossible to have a mobile home park on a piece that's not even one acre in size. And in conjunction with the petition, we did give you an aerial of the property in question and adjacent parcels, so do you mind if I approach you?
Please do.
So this aerial from the Macomb County Planning Department shows the general neighborhood. This is the parcel on the corner, it was Toby Hannah's party store, I represent him back in eighty-five when he built it. This six acre piece, a little piece of this in close to Township, this part up here, we just recently rezoned that conditionally to industrial and my client sold it off to the developer to build a building there. Toby Hannah passed away in the recent past, it's not a marketable situation for a party store or for a mobile home park. And probably when we got this approved back in eighty-five, the community said that it would service the people in that general area and we didn't have to rezon it. The, this drawing just shows the adjacent pieces and the railroad tracks in the back and then this piece up on the front.
Thank you.
And so, we set forth in the request, certain limitations, and this aerial is somewhat similar, but it gives you a little bit broader aerial view of the property. Here's I-84, this is the store, this is the mini storage place, and then I-84, then south raised industrial part over here, and then this is industrial in Mount Clemens area, and then multifamily up here.
Thank you. And yes, please be mindful of the tripping hazard.
Yep. So, we've given it to the planner, he's given his report, he sent it to me. Given the totality of the circumstances, he's recommended that our request is reasonable under the circumstances of this piece. Nobody's going to ever build a mobile home park on a piece that's not even one acre in size, so we would ask that you approve, make a recommendation to the Township Board of Trustees to rezone it based on our conditional, and we've put together a draft of the proposed agreement for that conditional rezoning. So if you had any questions, I'd try to answer them, and if people in the public have questions or comments, I'd like the opportunity to respond at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for Mr. Ginnon or any questions to the planner?
Do we want to open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, yes, thank you.
Oh.
I'm still in...
I just realized it's under public hearing.
Please, yes, thank you. I am going to eliminate my cast and put up the... So, yes, a motion please, may I have a motion please to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for case number seventeen dash twenty-two dash RZ.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Support.
Mr. Mulder, all those in favor? I'm sorry, roll call please.
Uh, Member O'Parka, yes. Member Mulder?
Yes.
Member Batja?
Yes.
Member Devlin?
Yes.
Uh, Member Tomlin?
Yes.
Chair Murray?
Yes. Okay, public hearing is now open.
And then Adam Chairman, rather than the repetitive, what I just said, I would incorporate as if that was part of the public hearing.
Yes, thank you, I should have, I apologize for, I should have opened it right away so that that would all be present within.
And Adam had a letter from this one as well, that wasn't in our packet.
And actually, I, I think the letter that's in this packet is the old one.
I attached Adam's letter from the previous one in the background, but Adam authored a new letter, just a couple days ago, which he did forward to me on July 13.
We do not have that, so if you could, Adam, if you could bring that up and please address an item, that would be appreciated. Sure.
I mean, I have it, physically have it.
This is a conditional rezoning request. The applicant has indicated that they are, they have offered, in exchange for the rezoning, certain conditions related to the use and development of the land. If rezoned, they have indicated that the property owners and their successors agree that only certain of the uses allowed in the industrial district, which is what they're proposing to have it rezoned to, is such that the ones noted and listed below, which are special land use in the industrial district, shall not be allowed to be constructed on the subject property. So these that are listed here are not possibilities if rezoned. Additionally, they pledge, they say that the property owner and the successor shall go through the normal building department review process for the reuse of an existing property you're building. That kind of goes without saying. So, in that sense, this is what they're offering as a condition, kind of protects the township to a certain extent that, you know, these potentially more intensive uses could not be allowed if rezoned. You, you may recall that, you know, this property here beyond it, beyond this site, was rezoned with conditions earlier this year, maybe last year. And, and this also was formerly zoned mobile home park, so interestingly, that has left then this small, you know, half acre parcel as being zoned to mobile home community. There is a commercial building there, a former party store, that clearly was a non-conforming use for some time. And so that's, you know, they've indicated in the application form that it's not marketable being zoned mobile home park, you know, now that the use is no longer active, essentially the non-performing status is gone, so they want to occupy this for another, you know, industrial use, it can't, can't be done, commercial use can't be done under the mobile The, the master plan calls for this, this area, with the exception of this corner piece, in the mobile home park district. We kind of talked about that and wrestled with that. Clearly, it's because of the proximity to the mobile home parks to the north. The remainder, this area is planned industrial, this is the border of Mount Clemens on the south side of Joy Boulevard, all of that is planned industrial. The master plan, for whatever reason, shows this as a white, doesn't even show it as a parcel. That this little corner is not shown on the future land use map as, as being in any designation. So it's an error, clearly an error. I'm not sure why that is, just an oversight on, you know, the person who prepared, or whoever prepared the plan. So I guess it's, it's up to us to decide what's appropriate. I do agree that given the recent industrial zoning, the fact that it's a non-conforming use, a very kind of parcel, I agree that there is no, the market does not support, it is not appropriate to continue to have it zoned mobile home park use. The applicant is requesting rezoning to the industrial district, that's consistent with what's surrounding it and across the street with it as well. And it is bordered on all sides by industrial zoning.
Well, thank you.
This would be a recommendation to the Township Board. The development agreement that they've submitted is in draft form. If you provide a recommendation to the Township Board, Rosemary will take a look at the agreement, have some comments certainly for the Township Board, but it'd be on to them for final decision.
Thank you. Okay, do we want to, is there anything else that you want to... Do we want to, is there anything else that you want to impart before we allow the public to speak?
No, I think I've covered Adam's government.
Madam Chair, one other thing. This, this, because of the proximity to residential zoning, these mobile home parks existing, it does not, it, how do you say, it does not qualify for medical marijuana operation.
And the park is right there.
Correct.
With the other piece there.
Correct.
Yeah, based on how the Harrison Township Board has seen it.
It's too close to these, to the mobile home park to qualify for medical marijuana operation.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think you know the, I think you know the routine. Take notes. We will as well. Again, we're going to limit to three minutes and if something's already been said, please don't repeat and please be kind. So would you like to come up and address? Please let us know your name and your address.
Yeah, hi. Attorney Stephen Becker, four-three-one-seven-five Lenfestie. I'm also the attorney for the property owners on Lenfestie. We own the four houses that, but the property which no one mentioned tonight, there is four residential houses there on the side of the property that they're trying to rezon is industrial. The, if the board remembers, this is a multiple rejection issue. This is the third or fourth year in a row that this party has brought this to this board's attention and each time it's been rejected. These are non-residence owners who inherited the property from the father for no cost, free and clear, and now they're trying to dump that property and take the money and run, as they say. Not, they don't intend to invest in this community, they're not trying to improve this community, and they don't live in this community. What does that do? That leaves the citizens, voters, and taxpayers holding the bill. This board talks a lot tonight about public benefit. The taxpayers and citizens have no benefit from rezoning this property. There's other things that you can do with this property other than industrial. Adam talked about the master plan and this was originally planned as mobile home park. When this, if I recall, back in eighty-five, this was originally industrial and went to mobile home. The property owners actually petitioned it and I believe it went back to mobile home park for that. Second of all, the purpose of the waiver on here for conditional rezoning on your notice of hearing is to make the property, in order to make the property more marketable. The owners have been marketing this property in the open, on their signs, and through the real estate agents for the last two years as industrial. The signs say industrial and when people, including myself, have called the real estate agents over the last two years regarding this property, they list it as industrial and say it's zoned industrial. They don't say it's currently zoned mobile home park and that a waiver would be a needed thing. So if the property has not sold in the last two years, and actually more than two years, with them advertising as industrial, this conditional rezoning is, I think, a fraud on the board. They've been advertising it for that. I believe their, the, I don't believe the master plan development impact study has been shown. I don't think there's a traffic study shown. If you go down Joy Road, I don't know what they're planning on doing that for, but Joy Road is a dirt road basically for all intents and purposes. So any industrial building, I know in the past they wanted a trucking warehouse to be brought in and built there. They wanted a storage facility to be brought in there that would increase the traffic tremendously and drain the resources on that. The master plan of the community is not for that. If you look at the surrounding area, there's a ton of vacant industrial and manufacturing property that's vacant for that and the road conditions, I don't believe justify that. And I take exception to, I believe Adam said earlier, that the property is all bordered on all sides by industrial. That's not true. You have the motor home, your mobile home parks, you have the railroad, which they do the railroad, the train rides for, we have our four houses there, and then you have a park on the other side. So it's not surrounded by industrial. The other side of Joy and the other side of Lenfestie is all industrial, but this partition and this parcel is not bordered by all industrial. So that's a misstatement by this board or whoever said that. Lastly, they've been advertising this parcel as, as the, and showed on the payment plan that part of this parcel has a strip behind the party store that goes out into Lenfestie Drive from that. That is not true and an action to quiet title will be filed by my client, the property owners, if that goes forward, because they actually have that property. They've claimed over the last two years that they own that strip when they were talking about putting in the mini storage, that the fire department wanted that as a fire lane and use that as a fire access road. They don't actually own that parcel and that piece of property. They go, goes into Lenfestie. My parents do and it's on a separate deed that sits on the four houses. So I don't believe that they're fully disclosing everything and apparently an action to quiet title is going to be needed on this. And so then if the city and township approves this, they're going to be named in that lawsuit as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak, please? Mr. Burdell?
Steve William Burdell, twenty-five-year resident. I thought when that other parcel was rezoned conditional industrial, that it was a grand bargain supposedly where they were going to leave some natural, you know, space and whatnot. And I'm just trying to think, correct me if I'm wrong, but was, I thought that party store was on the east side of LeF, LeFstie. That's what I thought. I didn't, I don't remember it being on the west side of, of LeFstie Drive. So, and, and, okay, I could be wrong on that, but that's what I remember. I remember it being on the east side of that. My other question is, I thought they were going to leave some natural stuff in there. It was a grand bargain and there was supposed to be some natural features or are, like the whole family, the kids, everyone got a piece of the pie and now they're all selling their, their piece or, so the whole grand bargain is, yeah, I thought it was a big grand bargain where this high-tech industrial place was going to, you know, it was going to be nice and everything. That was what I was understood. I didn't know they were going to chop off another chunk. And, I mean, I would think you would just level the party store and just put a little nature area in there or something. I was just, you know, because I thought that was what this grand bargain was all about, the grand scheme of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Commissars, any questions?
So I guess.
Can I respond?
Yeah, you can respond and I'll ask the question.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, absolutely.
The, I guess just going back to the map that's on the wall, the party store, this is in the right configuration, sits on the northwest corner of Lenfestie and Joy, as depicted on the wall. That piece was owned by Toby Hannah and his family. They sold it off to my clients. The record clearly reflects that it's zoned mobile home park. The other six acres, I represented Russell Development, Donna Russell Kerr and her family, to rezone those parcels from mobile home park, six acres plus or minus, conditionally rezoned. Your body recommended it. It went to the Township Board. They approved it. There was a written agreement signed by my clients and myself and the Township Supervisor after the board approved it to rezone that other piece to industrial with conditions. And one of the conditions was that we were going to leave up near the railroad track right away, the vegetation, I think it was 25 feet wide, in its natural state, and that's still in place. Just the point at this, this portion, this is where the four houses are. This portion right there is part of that six-acre piece. So when you look at this drawing, which was the layout, that's part of these, there was four parcels in Harrison and one in Clinton, included this piece. I believe there's a masonry wall between the party store and this piece. And if there's some dispute as to who owns this piece up here, it's not part of this rezoning petition. And I guess I would take exception to Mr. Becker's statement that there was some fraud committed by myself or my clients as to its zoning classification. Now, there was probably a point in time that my clients thought it was commercial or industrial, but when they investigated it further and found out it was mobile home park, that's when they retained me to get the property rezoned so that it can be used in industrial fashion. And you don't need a traffic impacts statement for the rezoning. There was a point in time when Russell zoned it, that the people that owned the mini storage were interested in buying their property. And they were going through the process and doing their due diligence and it was too big of a financial undertaking for them to buy it, so they backed off. There was a point in time when a trucking company approached the Russells about having a truck depot there. They didn't want to go through the rezoning process because when they found out from us that it was mobile home park, they didn't want to incur that expense or the process. Eventually, we found it industrial use and they were willing to go through the process, which we did. So I think this is clearly an appropriate rezoning for this 26,000 square foot piece. And we would ask that you recommend to the Township Board that rezone with the conditions that we put in our draft. And obviously, when it gets to the Township Board, Rosemary or her office is going to review it and it'll get refined and hopefully executed. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
So that's what I was getting at, was I want to clarify that we are only dealing with the rectangular section here, not the conditionally rezoned six acres.
Oh, yeah, that has nothing to do with this. It's totally different property owners.
Now, did you say it's the same owners as the six-acre parcel?
No.
They're separate?
It was always separate. Donna Russell's father and Rupert Craig owned that six acres. Both of those gentlemen passed away. It went under Charlie Russell's estate to his daughters, and I think he has either four or five. I generally dealt with two of them. And they weren't interested in building a mobile home park. They have a big industrial facility in Iver Township and they marketed it. We got it rezoned, they sold it, we've closed. Hopefully, the new buyer will be approaching the Township about building their building. But this 26,000 square foot piece is on the corner and it never did have anything to do with that piece. You know, while these rezoning things, maybe decades ago, let me see, it did, but at one time, just historically, Toby Hannah had a party store on the other side of the street that he rented and he was tired of paying rent and he bought the corner piece and built his own store that he had for several decades. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Comments? What would you like to do?
I just want to check with Adam again on something you said earlier. So because it's, it was non-conforming and the use it was before as a party store, it's zoned mobile home park, so technically, if someone bought it, they can't reopen the party store. It's basically stuck right now.
I'd have to double-check the ordinance and maybe we'd have to confirm exactly how long it's been unoccupied, whether it meets the abandonment clause, but it's, it's very likely that it couldn't be reestablished, nor could any other commercial or industrial business, the way that it's currently.
Or if it's destroyed beyond 50%.
It wouldn't be able to be rebuilt and reoccupied. Yeah.
Would a size parcel, that size, or the size of the parcel, point six?
Yeah, there's six tenths of an acre.
Would that even allow for a mobile home, any type of development that can be considered mobile home?
You could probably get a few units on there, maybe. A very small one. But it doesn't seem, I mean, just from looking at it, it doesn't seem like that's, you know, feasible statement, especially with being completely surrounded by industrial zoning.
Well, I think when we talked about, when we rezoned the other piece or conditional rezoned, the other piece, it was brought up that there was no market for mobile homes, mobile home communities in this area, so even if a small one could be developed there, there's not demand for that.
No, I agree. I remember driving through the mobile home park to the north that I believe it was about half occupied. I think you'd rather be in the quiet part than on the corner of a main road, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So.
So in closing, the public hearing, be the appropriate motion?
Would, if you would like to do that? Would, is anyone else want to speak to this item? Okay. Motion to, and if the commissioners don't have anything else to add that should be included in the public hearing, then yes.
Well, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for case number seventeen twenty-two RZ.
Motion to close. Do I have a second?
Support.
Mr. Batcha? Roll call, please.
Member Devlin?
Yes.
Member Batcha?
Yes.
Member Mulder?
Yes.
Member Tommelnell?
Yes.
Member O'Parkay? Yes. Chair Murray?
Yes. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Okay, what do we want to do? Any questions, comments?
So would a motion be to, to approve or recommend approval for the rezoning, you would need to reference the findings in the planner's letter?
You can do that if you'd like.
Rather than go through each one?
I'd rather you do that.
Reference as a, reference as a whole?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve, recommend approval of the conditional rezoning from MHC to IND for case number seventeen twenty-two RZ, two four five three one, Henry B. Joy Boulevard, subject to the conditions that have been indicated in the materials provided and based on the findings that have been indicated in the planner's letter dated July thirteenth, 2022.
And so I just want to, I just want to understand, did you, did you say go from mobile home park to industrial or did you say R, R?
MHC to IND.
Thank you, IND, okay. Thank you. So we have a motion to recommend to the Township Board the approval of the rezoning from mobile home community to industrial, taking into consideration the items in the planner's letter dated July thirteenth, 2022. Do I have a second?
I'll support that with one comment.
Okay.
I didn't hear you use the word conditional.
Ah, thank you, yes. She did, I didn't.
It's a conditional, you did repeat conditional.
Yeah.
I referenced the conditions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I still maintain the support.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, we have support. Discussion on the motion?
I just have one more question for Adam about the motion. The conditions, is that basically a carbon copy from the six acre, six acre parcel?
The exclusion of those uses, yes.
The exclusion of those uses, yes, was identical, but the other condition for the six acre parcel was that enhanced greenbelt in the northern part of that property. There is no greenbelt on this property, there are no, basically no trees on this property.
But the use restrictions are?
The use restrictions are, are identical.
And I'm just going to add one other thing. The use restrictions are identical, but we did also add in, because at the time the commissioners wanted to put it in there, is that there would be no marijuana businesses permitted on the property.
Okay, right, and that's, Adam had mentioned that earlier.
It is, the reason why they can't, Adam explained why, I'm just saying in the last conditional rezoning agreement, the commissioners still wanted that in the conditional rezoning agreement. At the top.
Okay, does that answer?
That's my only question with the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Uh, Member Devlin?
Yes.
Member Batsha?
Yes.
Member Mulder?
Yes.
Member Tom Allen?
Yes.
Member O'Parfatt? Yes. Chair Murray?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Can I ask you a question? Do you know when it would go to the township board?
When's the next? Probably in, in two weeks, that we set up when the next meeting is.
It typically takes more than two weeks, but.
Didn't have to bring him here, did I?
Well, next meeting's twenty-fifth.
Oh, yeah.
The twenty-fifth is the next meeting, and, and so does this meet the requirement for?
He should probably call on Monday, just ask for any, when he needs it.
Yeah, I'll call, um.
Be set for the next, you'll know, because I know you're going on vacation.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, comments from the planner? Oh, I'm sorry, unfinished business, new business correspondence, nothing. Comments from the planner?
We did have a tech team meeting a couple weeks ago, just pulling it open, the two items, both in the industrial park, one was a piece of equipment, and one was enclosing with a fence, a rear concrete pad, both in the industrial district, both were approved. The, the other comment that I have is that there is a special meeting next week, Thursday at this time, requested by the applicant, the common sale for the Ballard Street, final formal PUD application, that's a public hearing.
Yes. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the floor? Okay, Mr. Bergdahl, three minutes. Thank you.
Board members, that drawing that you guys showed us on those condos that you squelched, this was a very unique, creative thing. I did a job right next to those condos you showed me in Ira Township. There's a lot more space there. Those backyards, which you guys are looking at, you guys are looking at a road on one side and a river on the other side. Those condos, creative condos, you guys, some, you showed me up on the screen there, if you want to put it back up there. I did a job for the guy right next door in Ira Township. Okay, yep. Right to the store. Look at the setbacks and look at the driveways. Look at the depth of those condos. Look at the backs. Very, very creative. That's creative. I, I, I did a job right next door to those. There's some space there. What you guys are looking at here, and we want to be creative, it's not creative. You're looking at, oh, your front door, your garage door is a street, the back, you're dropping your head into the water. This here, you're looking at a, you're looking at about a forty foot from that deck to that, to those, to that river, at least forty foot. I know that area, so you can't fool me. That's Ira Township. I, I know exactly where that is. There's a lot of space there. Yes, that is creative. See the openings at the street? See all that? See the setbacks? See how that's away from Dixie Highway, which is, which is actually Jefferson, but that's farther north, twenty-nine Dixie Highway. It's all Jefferson. That's creative. Not this other job here, where your garage, your garage door is on North River Road and your back of your house, your, your, your head's going to fall in the river, okay? Going to walk out, out of your back door with your coffee cup and you're going to fall in the lake. That's not creative, okay? That's creative. That's Ira Township, okay? So let's put on our thinking caps. I agree with Mr. Batsha. And you guys step up to the plate and back Mr. Batsha up on this, he knows what he's talking about. This is creative. The other thing is not creative. You're going to have, all those are going to end up being owned by slum lords and junk. Nope, nobody with any half-brain in their heads is going to buy one of those. No way. They might buy something like this, and I met all the people there, very nice people, okay? I know, I met all those people. That's creative. Not what you're doing over here on North River Road, okay? That, that's, that's your, that's your example, okay?
Go visit it.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Bergdahl.
Go take a look at that. Drive up Jefferson till you get to Dixie Highway, you'll see that.
Thank you.
In Ira Township, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jim Sunstock, three-one-six-nine-eight, San Juan, I know you got that address.
All right.
I just hit. I guess the concern I have is that the, the approval of the less than five acres.
It's ridiculous.
It's just, it's unbelievable to me that you allowed that to happen. As he said, it's, you're going to be walking out the back door, you got a fifteen-foot patio, and then you're going to walk across a five-foot little road or little bike path or whatever they called it, and you're going to be basically in the river. There's nothing there. There's no, there's no room. Just as a point of reference, my house sits on point three-four acres in Venice Shores. It's approximately the biggest lot in the subdivision. Point three-four acres. It's got a twenty-six hundred square foot footprint and another twelve hundred square foot garage footprint. And guess what? They want to set seven of those things on a site that is just barely double what I have. That's ridiculous. It is terribly ridiculous. I do like the thought that you guys came up with about possibly putting some kind of driveway to keep them off of North River Road, but I, I'll bet you they come back and tell you they can't do that. So, you know, the other question I have is you just talked about conditional rezoning. If these people were so set on being creative, why didn't they come in and ask for conditional rezoning on that from Marina to RM2? And they'd have one point two-five acres to work with, and they could probably get about eight or nine units on there. I mean, these guys are trying to milk the township and you guys are letting them make a farce out of our planning commission rules and our PUD activity. Point seven-seven acres for seven units plus two-car garages plus a pickleball court. That's it? Come on. You know what? Since you've already said they can use that point two, or point seven-seven acres, maybe they ought to have three units on it. That would be creative.
Yeah.
That's how you do it.
Turn them the other way.
And I, I guess I appreciate the discussion that you guys had, and, you know, I have sat on the planning commission in the past, so, you know, I know what I'm talking about. I know that ordinance sounds better than you guys do, because I, I helped write the document. So, you know what? Don't let them make a farce out of the, the PUD. They said that Mr. McMackin owns the property? That's right. Who's going to develop it? She did not answer that question. Who is going to put the units on there for?
Thank you.
They're trying to sell it.
Thank you, Mr. Sunstock.
Jim, it in there.
Okay. Any additional comments from the floor? Our next meeting is Thursday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I have one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry? You missed your opportunity, no.
I tried. So I had a meeting today with, from the Army Corps, and they were talking about the dredging of the Clinton River, we're in this room actually, and that is a project that's going to happen, it's going to be multi-year project dredging. They're looking for large sites where they can store the spoils while they dewater them before they take down the weeds and that stuff, so that could have some impact on North River Road or South River Road, and docks potentially could be removed. There's not too many sites, you know, that are at least five to ten acres in the township along the river, and that's what they're looking for. So that, I don't know that that'll be an action that'll come before us, but I just thought, I thought you'd be interested to hear that as some.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
Is there a plan to do mechanical dredging or the vacuum dredging?
The vacuum dredging. It can be a lot of stuff.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, may I please have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Mr. Devlin? Mr. Mulder? And it is ten twenty-five. Thank you, everyone.